Freddie got his question.
We're on, Rob.
We're good? Okay.
Poor Freddie.
Freddie Hurley?
She's sick.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for March 2012, or two, March 12, 2019, Rutland Public Schools Board of Commissioners. If you could please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, first on the agenda would be a roll call. Can you please note that Commissioners Corcel, Schump, Olenek, and Blow are not in attendance?
Indeed.
Okay. Next on the agenda-
Actually, Mike's coming. Sorry. Mike is just coming through the door.
Okay.
Are you gonna yell at him?
You can. Later. So, um-
I want it televised.
Six thirty, we start.
It is.
You missed the pledge.
So, um-
Just check.
Next on the agenda, we have two sets of board notes that we need to approve. So, the first one would be for the February 26, 2019. Are there any changes, revisions, in that particular set of notes?
I'll make a motion to accept this one.
Oh, we don't even have to if there are no changes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Okay, so the second one is the March 6 special meeting, Board of Commissioners' notes. Are there any changes or revisions?
Well, I have an objection. My understanding was that it should say "before" instead of "by," and I've gotten two different answers from two different members that are part of that committee.
Okay.
So, I'd like it to say "before."
Okay, so, does anyone else have any, if you recall, if it's "before" or "by"?
I thought it was intentionally "by."
I did, too.
Joanne, that puts you on the spot.
No, I did think it was "for," "before," however, last night at the meeting, they reminded me it was "by" and why it was "by."
Okay.
So, I did take the meeting notes that night and wrote them down, and I did them, in fact, Dick did them as well as I did, and both did say "by."
Okay. Well, I was misinformed then, so I'd like to, well, I guess it doesn't matter at this point. I'd just like somehow, in the record, an objection that I don't believe the minutes are accurate. So, I'll vote "no."
Okay. So, I guess then we're gonna have to, we'll have to make a vote. Can I have a motion to accept the March 6?
So moved.
Second.
Second? All of those in favor of those notes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
Okay. We noted? We got it? Okay. Next on the agenda is communication. So, I guess first, let's see, do we have any written communication at the board? And then we'll move to our-
You can do the audience first. You can do the audience first.
Okay, so is there anyone in the audience, whether they're, they're an agenda item or a non-agenda item, would like to come forward and speak to the board? Okay. Okay. So, written?
Okay. As you are all aware, this is Rob's last board meeting with us. He has taken the parachute out. He's been on the school board since 2012 and clerked since 2015. He was Chair of Labor Relations and negotiated through a very interesting time when insurance in the state of Vermont was going haywire for everybody and managed to go through that. It's been a pleasure to serve with him, I will say. He always has a fresh perspective, kind of put me in my place a few times, but that's okay. I don't mind. But I'd like to thank Rob for all of his years of service on the Rutland City Public School Board.
Thanks very much.
I'll second.
I'm just gonna say a few things quickly. First of all, it's an honor to work with such amazing people, not only on the board, but in the school community, from top to bottom, bottom to top. Wonderful people, and I guess what you find very quickly is that everyone believes that what's first are what, students. So, you know, it's been a pleasure, it's been an honor, it's been challenging at times, and being a child of a retired teacher, I don't know, maybe it's my little way of giving back to all my mom's stuff, so, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so next, I don't like chairing, by the way. Performances Excellence Initiative, I don't believe we have anything at that, so, at the moment, so we'll move forward. We're gonna go into school programs and updates, and I guess we're gonna start with the student reps. Who would like to go first? To my right, I'm right-handed, so you-
Yeah, I'll go first. Thanks, Ellen.
So, for Rutland High School, last night, our boys varsity basketball team won semifinals against MMU at Patrick Gymnasium at UVM, and they will be moving on to this Sunday at the D1 championship game at 2:00 PM at Patrick Gymnasium. Tickets are on sale this Wednesday from 9:00 AM to 12:00, and this Friday from 9:00 AM to 12:00, and in the RHS Athletic Office, and they're also available at vpaonline.org and at UVM an hour before. The tickets are $5 for students and $8 for adults. The makeup spring sports meeting and first day of practice for spring sports is this next Monday at the 18th. The band concert was last night, the music in our schools concert, so from the youngest grades to the oldest, and I was told it was really good. The S facts for 9th grade and the science assessment for 11th grade are before and after April break. March 28 is our Global Studies and STEM Fair. So, yeah. So, I'm going to start off with Northwest. So, at Northwest is Parent Teacher Conference Week, and the teachers are looking forward to meeting with the parents and guardians to celebrate student growth and to discuss a partnership in supporting and learning. The teachers meet weekly with each other to participate in a variety of professional learning communities, otherwise known as PLCs. One PLC recently foreign focuses upon equity and diversity. Another PLC focuses upon outdoor learning, working to create more opportunities to teach students in the great outdoors. The past month was filled with exciting events such as the choral concerts where the first graders and kindergarteners share their joyful voices under the direction of their music teacher, Jennifer Hart, and a fun-filled winter carnival at George Eddy Park, organized and directed by the PE teacher, Brian Crippoli. Kindergarten students recently visited Stafford Tech where they learned all about the tools there and used and enjoyed interactions with Stafford Technical Students. At RIS, Grade 4 students completed the National Assessment of Educational Progress, or the NAEP, yesterday, and the PTO Scholastic Book Fair is going on during the parent teacher conferences this week. At RMS, mock legislation sessions with 8th grade have started, and four state representatives attended and students ran the session. Student-led conferences have been a big focus as students are getting ready to present PLPs to parents on Wednesday and Thursday. Stafford, at Stafford, the health career students are in their third week of clinical rotations at Genesis Healthcare. They will continue for four more weeks in preparation for taking their Vermont Licensed Nursing Assistant written in practical exams in May. The auto technology is working in collaboration with several other STC programs to build a Stafford race car. This wonderful project where the math and engineering students are designing parts for the car, which are later created by our Power Mechanics and Welding Program. The race car is being built with private donations from local businesses and community members and the funds the students have earned in the auto tech garage. On Friday, March 22, the engineering students will be competing in the statewide bridge building competition at BTC, and our digital arts students will be competing in a design competition at Northern Vermont University in Linden. And that is all I have.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, both of you. Okay, so next is our student and staff celebration, and I believe Ron Iseman is going to introduce some students to discuss the accomplishments at this speech and debates, so.
Should we come up there?
Please. Please. Thank you. Yes. I'm gonna change to my new chair. Thank you.
This year, we had 17 students participate in our speech club, and eight of them are going on to the district tournament, which includes parts of Pennsylvania and New York and all of Vermont, and that competition will be next weekend. And so, we have eight people participating in that. But this year, we had a very successful season, and first, I, you know, want to thank Marcia Castle, who, her dedication to the program and expertise really helped a lot of these students do amazingly well this year. So, I'm gonna call some of them up, and they'll come up and tell, they'll tell you what event that they did and some of the successes they had this year. Unfortunately, two people couldn't be here. I did want to recognize Matt Rock, who participated in drama, and he won first place at the state competition. And Casey Coughlin, a senior on our team, another senior on our team, he participated in the impromptu category and came in third place at the state competition and won several tournaments during the regular season. First, Trevor?
Sure. Hi, I'm Trevor McKay. I'm a junior at Rutland High. I compete in impromptu, so I pick three topics out of a hat, basically, and then I have a minute to think about it, and then I give a speech, and I have to be within two to three minutes, and I have to stay on topic, I have to enunciate clearly, maintain eye contact, and then I get judged on that. And I had a really successful season. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go to states because I came down with a really bad bout of the flu, but the team can attest to that because I was FaceTiming them during the competition. But I had a really successful season, several first places, some other places, placements, and I really love speech and debate because it gives me an avenue to, for public speaking and to improve myself and just to be with other students who love doing what I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Cameron. I attend Rutland High School as well. I did also impromptu a little extent and am participating in districts.
How about our two captains, Annie Lynn and Austin Robertson?
You guys can talk. Your mic definitely there would be good.
All right. Good evening. I'm Austin Robertson, and for the last three years, I've competed in the pros category, where I prepare a piece of literature. Usually, I like to prepare it in a more dramatic fashion than a lot of the other contestants. This year, I picked a piece called "House of Ash." It was about a little girl's experience with 9/11, witnessing her parents fall from the towers, and it was, it gives me a real opportunity to express the more like dramatic side of my personality that I may not in school or in sports, and it's just, it's a lot of fun to be with, like what Trevor said, with people that really enjoy doing the same thing. And so, for the past three years, I've really loved competing in pros, and my sophomore year, I didn't place very well in the first few competitions. I started off in like fourth and third, and then I ended up placing second in the state competition. And then this year, I placed first in states, and I was actually admitted straight into the finals of states, so that means I won four competitions throughout the year out of the six that I went to. And it was just a really great experience this year. It was a really cool way to end my career as speech and debate in Rutland, and I'm gonna miss all these people that I've been with for three years. It's just a lot of fun, and-
Hi, I'm Annie, and for the past three years, I've competed in the poetry category, and so similar to pros in poetry, you basically pick a piece that is usually around three to five minutes. So, this year, I decided to focus my piece on mental health. So, the piece that I chose to recite was called "Explaining My Depression to My Mother." And I'm so grateful for speech and debate because it has honestly made me the person that I am today, has given me so much confidence, and it has really helped me find my voice. Sort of to give you an example, the last two years, my first year, I did a piece on sort of what it means to be Chinese, and then last year, I focused my piece on gun violence. And so, just wanna say I'm so grateful from Madam and Mr. Iseman for all their help, and I'm so excited to pursue speech in college.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, so, we'll go back to Dick afterwards, don't worry. I'm Ethan, Ethan Schmidt. I'm a junior at Rutland. I, for the past three years, along with Austin and Annie, have competed in a speech category known as extemp. It's very similar to impromptu in the, in the way that you have to prepare on the spot, but mine has to do with current events, so I'll get a slip, and it'll have a topic, you know, based in foreign affairs or domestic affairs, and, you know, in the Vermont competition, you have the ability to research on a computer or bring articles with you to research, and you can write out what you, what you're gonna speak about on the note card, statistics or points or otherwise, and then you present a five to seven-minute speech about that current event, and you're rated, three different rounds, and for the past three years, I've really enjoyed this category, given me the avenue to let out my political opinions, which are very strong. But, yeah, and so, three years ago was my first year. I was a state finalist in extemp and went on to districts, which is what we're going to soon, and I qualified for nationals there, placed second my first year. Last year, I didn't have the chance to go to districts, but this year was a very successful season as well. I won two different competitions and then placed second in another two competitions and was a state finalist. Again, well, no, not a state finalist, no. We had another person except from our team that was a state finalist, but I can't wait to go to districts and try to do well there, and I've really enjoyed this team. It's, you know, I've made most of my friends through speech and debate, and I can't wait for my senior year.
Okay. My name is Jacob Neipes. I'm currently a sophomore at Rutland High School, and for both my freshman and sophomore years, I have competed in the impromptu event. I really enjoy speech and debate. When I was a freshman, I placed fairly well. I wasn't able to go to as many events as I would have liked to, but I did win one tournament. And this year, I did very well. I placed typically within the high end of my event, and I was a state finalist.
I do want to add just one last thing. To speak on behalf of the whole team, we just want to thank the board and all the administration and the teachers that have supported us along the way. I don't think we would have had as much success without the constant support from everyone in the school, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, one.
Yes, sure.
When, what, what time would you like get in to start, a student get into something like this? What grade would they start thinking about?
So, I, along with Annie, we started our sophomore year, but I highly regret not starting my freshman year because just it would have given me one more year of fun with these guys and to prepare. So, my sophomore year, I really realized I wanted to get involved more in the school, and speech and debate was a great way to hone in on public speaking. So, I think the younger, the better, to just give you more experience and just have more opportunities for times to have fun, yeah. So, whenever you really feel comfortable starting something like this is usually the best.
You gave me a great idea. Maybe we'll put registration forms in the hospitals.
So, is there a team component to it as far as like totaling scores across the different categories across the school and as, in addition to the individual component?
So, yeah, so at each competition, the teams, all the scores that we rack up individually, they get averaged together. So, typically, like the really big teams, they place very well. So, they're, usually at each competition, there's like top three teams. We placed, placed second as a whole team. I think at the-
Two different competitions.
Two different competitions.
Typically, third and fourth.
Yeah, and so, it has to do with size and just because a lot of the bigger schools, they have a lot of kids that will place like top three in every category. So, if you get top three like consistently like that, you, your average tends to be higher. But I can say that like as a team that of like our size, this year, I think was the biggest that I've been a part of with 17 kids. I was just really proud of how well we came together and averaged our scores.
I have another question. So, are there any other schools out there, you see their teams, and you think, gee, I wish we had this opportunity, or this would be like, this would really kick it up the next notch for the opportunities that we do have?
Yeah, South Burlington?
And what, yeah.
No, I wouldn't go as far as to say that we envy other teams. I think-
I guess I don't mean the team, but if, do they have one asset or one opportunity that you think that you guys are lacking within the school or the sports amongst the community?
Well, Chester did have team sweatshirts, but, other than that, I mean, personally, I wouldn't trade this team in for anything. I don't think any of the program has as much attention that Mr. Iseman and Madam have given us, and I, yeah, I don't know if we go to a competition and look at another team and say, oh, they have something that I wish we had.
Maybe a team limo.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe. Yeah, I think, I think this-
One of the advantages, too, though, of the northern schools is they're a little bit closer together, so they can coordinate transportation between schools, they can do scrimmages between schools, and unfortunately for us, the only, the closest school is Woodstock and Burn Burton, and those are kind of, Burn Burton's a new program. So, some of that is just distance, and, but we have no control over that.
Dana?
Thank you.
How many students are on your team, and do you see any opportunities for more recruitment?
Always. We're always looking for new members.
Yeah, this year, we actually got a lot bigger. You know, in previous years, we had a small team, sometimes under 10. This year, a lot of freshmen joined, so a lot of people that are willing to be here along the ride for the next four years of their high school career, and I think that's very encouraging because, you know, having, having those kids that are willing to participate and are trying new things, I think for next year and the year after, I think that's encouraging when it comes to recruitment.
What do you attribute the rise in numbers to? What do you think has changed that more people are becoming interested in what you do?
I think exposing the school to what we do, the kind of club that we are. I remember like one of our first meetings, I saw that we were, it wasn't like a meeting where everybody was there. We didn't have all 17 members there. We were pretty low, we were probably about 10, and so as I was walking through the halls, I saw some pretty chatty freshmen. I was like, oh, okay. I went up to them, I was like, hey, you guys like to talk. Why don't you join speech and debate? I never saw them again, but, but it's just, I think seeing that like it's not just like a club of individuals performing, showing how well you can come together as a team and give the opportunity to make more friends, I really think that exposing the younger grades definitely helps because once you get into your junior and senior years, you're not always like apt to join in more clubs than you already are in. So, I think having a lot of exposure to the freshmen really helps.
Are any of you involved in the theater program?
Yeah, that's a natural connection. We have a couple of natural limits because of, it's very difficult to do this if you do sports because our competitions are on Saturday mornings, so winter sports athletes practically impossible. And then the drama, they were, the drama kids generally work so hard in the drama activities that they don't have other time to do other activities. So, for us, the sweet spot is finding people who are really interested in being creative, talking in public, doing public speaking, but also having that schedule free, so, you know, that's a little bit of a tricky recruitment aspect.
I would, I would add that the program is scaffolded with the different categories so that even if you just want to get your feet wet, you can do something very prescribed and then work up to things that take a little bit more confidence, all the way up to writing your own piece, in an oratory piece. So, for any level of timidity or confidence, there's, there's a category.
Nice.
Yeah, I was just curious, are any of you also involved in debate, or is it purely individual events?
Well, we debate with each other a lot. So, we don't have our own debate team because usually at the competitions, you have to stay really late, and that just usually doesn't work with our timing.
And, yeah, it involves numbers that we just, we had a lot more people interested in speech than the debate side, and, yeah, we, there, we see at the competitions, there is a large divide between the speech and the debate and how, so if you get involved in debate, you are invested in debate, and you don't always have time to go back to speech. And so, I just think with the combination of numbers and interest, that we just haven't like had the time to really form debate.
Gotcha. I usually thought the speech events happened after the debate so that you could actually get some stragglers that would do both, but, yeah.
Yeah, they, at the competitions, they usually are happening at the same time, but debate goes like three hours longer than speech.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? You know, had I known, they're amazing, and I would have just delegated this role to chair to all of you tonight and just made-
You're in training.
Much more animated than I am, so, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
So, next on the agenda is, I believe Ms. Gartner is going to give a presentation on New Neighbors and Black Lives Matter, so if Ms. Gartner and-
I'm not actually presenting, my students are presenting.
True.
I'm a senior at Rutland High School.
I'm Noah Way. I'm also a senior at Rutland High School.
I'm Greta Solso. I'm a senior at Rutland High School.
I'm Jameson Evans. I'm also a senior at Rutland High School.
Today, we're gonna be giving a presentation about why we want a Black Lives Matter flag raised at Rutland High School.
So, what is New Neighbors? New Neighbors is a club that focuses on promoting life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for everybody. We began as a group to support like the Syrian families in 2016. We hosted dinners and fundraisers to help them out, and then, but over the past year, we became more of a diversity club and focusing more on issues related to diversity and equality in our community.
A race is a grouping of humans based on shared physical or social qualities, or social qualities and the categories generally viewed as distinct by society. And just to clarify, race is not biological, it's determined by society. However, the effects of racism are real, long-lasting, and shape the lives of many people in our country and across the world. And racism is prejudiced, is prejudiced discrimination or antagonism directed against someone of a different race based on the belief that one's own race is superior. These are terms that have been used against us in a negative way on school campus, and as most time, they're in a very negative manner in a way to bring us down. Sometimes, more, most of the times, they're used in a joke, but that's also not, it's also not acceptable. And the common instinct, because it happens so consistently, is just to laugh it off because either it's one of our friends saying it, or you don't like want to dampen the mood by like giving them a quick like lesson on how you can't say that stuff. So, because of this lack of diversity, we are the minority, but that doesn't mean we should be targets for easy jokes or anything like that. And another misconception is that these, these terms are only used in the high school, but last year, our assistant superintendent, Rob Bliss, spoke with us, and he told us about an issue with between three kids, two white kids and one black kid, where the white kids use these words to try to harass this, this one kid, and that's, he was, he wanted help from us and to try to find solutions and like through the administration and things like that, things that, and that's what I'll get to later, are the solutions that we came up with. But these terms should not be used so loosely, and we need to be, we need to all be on the same page and get a better understanding of that.
The United States has a long history of systemic racism, which is institutional and racism that pervades every part of society. From the very beginning, the United States has had the institution of slavery, but even after the 13th Amendment was passed, which freed slaves, there were lynchings, hate crimes, redlining, and other forms of discrimination during the Jim Crow- there were lynchings, hate crimes, redlining, and other forms of discrimination during the Jim Crow era and segregation, as well as the KKK, which formed in the early 1900s. And we can see the effects of racism even now with police brutality and incarceration. I really recommend the 13th, which is a documentary that was While Vermont did not institute slavery, the state still does possess a racist history. This, the eugenics movement is a prime example of Vermont's racism. Eugenics was based off of Darwin's theory of natural selection, which was used to validate forced sterilization policies in Vermont and in states across the country. They sterilized people who they, people, the government deemed feeble minded and poor in society, which disproportionately affected people of color due to housing, work, and other forms of discrimination. The founder of the, one of the founders of the movement in the United States was actually Henry Jakins, who was a professor of zoology at UVM. And the eugenics movement in the US was used by Hitler to validate his discriminatory policies, help him rise to power, and eventually try to implement the final solution.
So Divided by Diversity was a film. And this is just one way that high profile racism has been seen in Rutland. So a group of African Americans came from the Bronx to attend MSJ in 2010 and 2011 school year. And these kids just faced harassment like in and out of school. So here's a quick video of it.
I thought, I know, I was just gonna come here and we was gonna play basketball, win, and everyone was just gonna love us. It didn't quite go that way.
I don't know if it's because they're black. I don't know if it's because they were from New York. I'm not sure about all the reasons, but for some, for some reason, it rubbed a lot of people the wrong way.
I think basically it was the sports part of it is why everybody was mad. And then like the racial part of it, they didn't like, not sugar, they didn't like black people.
Some people were wrong about what they think in black people, like what they think about black people. That's what, I feel like they all thought we were just there for basketball and it wasn't, that wasn't true at all.
We had a couple of parents from some of the other schools who felt that because these students had come in and had done so well, it had denied their students the ability to win a state championship.
I've had parents not be happy or this or that, but not stoop to the level that this happened. You know, it was almost about, it was so obvious that, that they would do something at any cost. It was beyond just disgruntled because your kids were, you know, losing, that it was, you know, a race thing.
I don't know, I was just like, species like. I don't know, I felt like it was just like basketball, like wow, I don't know. But now I see like basketball is bigger than what it seems.
Coach B would tell us, you know, you can't, you can't act back, you can't lash out or else you're gonna be, you're put under a microscope with everything that you do. And we as a team held each other accountable to, to just staying the course rather than reacting and doing something stupid.
And they would target us as a group, then they would target Matt, then they target Coach and then Miss Cam. And like they trying to target everyone, so I was just like, wow, you know, like we really need to win so we can just shut them up.
Another really high profile case in Vermont is that of Kayla Morris, who was the only black female legislator in Vermont. But she resigned and suspended her reelection campaign due to racist attacks online by a self-proclaimed white supremacist. She was forced to resign when a man, the man began to follow her and her family in real life and broke into her house to leave a death threat. Also in a recent case, like yesterday, in Bennington, the Old Castle Theater was vandalized with racist graffiti right before a performance from Ghana of a dance and music group.
Racial profiling is the use of race or ethnicity as grounds for suspecting somebody has committed a crime. And this is a big issue today and there's evidence in the police system. For example, in St. Louis County, Missouri, in the town of Florissant, 71% of drivers pulled over by police in 2013 were black, while at this time, only 27% of the population were black. Missouri is just an example that suffers from this problem dramatically. But more locally, in 2016, in Vermont, troopers searched black drivers at a traffic stop rate of 2.6% compared to searching white people at only 1%. A study conducted by UVM professor Stephanie Segino, Driving While Black and Brown, in Vermont, published in 2017, explored the racial disparities throughout the 29 departments covering 78% of the population. And that's a quick graph comparing the rates, and that's Stephanie. The study found that black drivers are arrested at twice the rate of white drivers and are searched at four times the rate as white drivers. In spite of the higher search rates of color, whites are more likely to be found with contraband. These statistics go on and on, but the reason it's so significant is because there's only 1%, the population of Vermont is only 1% black. And this is the, this is a group of people who is being searched four times at the rate compared to the majority and being pulled over twice the rate. There's a clear difference in how white drivers are treated versus drivers of color. This is a video about Lawrence Crosby, a PhD student who was trying to fix his car. And he had 911 called on him and he was racially profiled. He was just trying to fix his car and a woman called, here's a video. So yeah, a woman called 911 on him and then you'll see what happens.
Stop resisting, stop resisting. Sir, you're on video.
All right, FYI. Fine, fine.
Yes, it's my vehicle, sir, I was trying to stop something on you.
Okay, I have evidence, okay, that's it.
Well, when we say you to get down, you gotta get down.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Okay.
Then why am I being, send the hotel?
We gotta verify this car is not stolen, man.
I'm a senior student at Northwest University in the Department of Materials Technology in New Orleans. I purchased this vehicle January 23rd, 2015.
From Libertyville, South LA.
Yes, I have all the evidence.
That's who a registered person is?
My phone. 73. Can you guys tell us who the claim registered to?
I don't know who, I don't know why.
I did not.
But you did, you did.
No, I did not.
There is something called the Fifth Amendment.
Nope.
Okay. That doesn't apply.
Yes, it does.
Hey, what's up?
Hi, I called. It looks like he had, it looks like he had a bar in his hand and he's trying to jimmy it open. I feel really, like I feel really, like I don't, I didn't mean to like racially profile it, just like
Oh, yeah, no, 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 no.
And I don't want to like
All right, man, man, calm down.
I know.
Okay.
I just
All right. He got a different, he got a different issue going on right now. Um, she didn't want to get your information?
Yeah, no, um, yeah.
Okay, I get you, I get you. Come to him. Hmm? I think it's fine. Okay, I was getting an info.
So these, the two graphs on top are to show the over-representation of black people in jails and the under-representations of white people in jails. On the left is at a national level where on the Y axis, you can see the percent makeup of each race. And on the X axis, you can see the, that's the amount in jail. So you can see there's a negative correlation between jail and white people, but in black people, there's a positive one. And in the Vermont one on the right-hand side, it's even, it's the same pattern, but it's even more dramatic. It says 94%, there's 94% of white people, same negative correlation, and only 1% black people, but there's a positive correlation. And then the bottom ones, they're all the same, it's the one for Vermont, but it's a little easier to see. The Southern Poverty Law Center is an organization dedicated to fighting hate and bigotry and finding justice for everybody in our society through education and legitation and other methods. This is a map, mapping the hate groups in America and with their approximate locations. And if you click the dots, it'll tell you what kind of hate group it is. And a hate group is a group that has beliefs or practices that attack an entire group of people based on their immutable characteristics, which are characteristics that you can't really control, such as race or religion or something like that. And there's no dot on Vermont, but there is one being tracked and it's called the Patriot Front, who fairly recently had a march up in Burlington. And as they're the only one being tracked, that leaves a possibility for there to be more in Vermont. These are pictures of some of the many victims of police brutality, specifically black people shot by white cops. The ages of these men range from 11 to full adults. And the reasons for them being killed vary. For example, Eric Gardner was selling cigarettes when he was attacked by multiple cops and choked to death. And Trevon Martin on the right was walking home from the store and minding his own business. And then he was followed by George Zimmerman, who eventually killed him because he thought he was a threat, but he was unarmed. So Black Lives Matter is a black-centered movement building project that was created in response to the acquittal of Trevon Martin's murderer, George Zimmerman. And unlike other black liberation movements, Black Lives Matter strives to include not only black heterosexual cisgender men, which cisgender meaning that their birth sex matches up with their gender identification, but Black Lives Matter also includes black women, queer, and transgender people.
The hashtag SayYourName is a campaign within the Black Lives Matter movement to elevate the stories of black women who have been affected by police brutality as their stories are often forgotten in the sea of media coverage and the countless stories of violence and discrimination and hate crimes around the world. This campaign is a move for, within the Black Lives Matter movement to ensure that their activism is intersectional and recognizes the voices of all people.
So this is Montpelier, they were the first school to put up the Black Lives Matter flag. And they started there, to first get it up, they started as their own club and then went to their own school board. And then over the next year, South Burlington, U32, Essex, and Burlington have put up their own Black Lives Matter flag.
This year, the Black Lives Matter movement has launched a campaign for racial justice education in schools, giving teachers and students resources to diversify the curriculum and experiences discussed in the classroom. Noah and Alex will discuss the specific requests that we have for the school board to implement for racial equality, equity, and inclusion in the Rutland community. But we all really urge the school board to take a stand through the flag and to say that Rutland is an accepting, welcoming community to live in.
So the purpose of hanging the Black Lives Matter flag in front of our school is to, like Greta said, take a stand against racism in our community. Alex, Jameson, and I, and a few other minorities in our, in our school have experienced racism on school grounds, which is unfortunate, but it's just our reality. By raising the flag, we're taking the first step towards eliminating racism in our school system and in our community by showing everyone that black lives truly do matter. And again, raising the flag is only the beginning of a long-term process. Some of the requests that we have, that we want to, some of the things we want to see after the raising of the flag is equity training for faculty and a committee regarding equity and inclusion consisting of students, faculty, and staff, and a more diverse selection of teachers. So a question that was brought to our club at one point was, why can't we meet these requests without raising the flag? But our answer is that it's a lot more than just a flag. According to the 2010 census, 0.87% of the Vermont population is black, making it one of the whitest states in America. Raising the flag makes a statement that not only black people support the movement, but white people as well. Flying the flag gives everyone a chance to spread awareness and understanding of the oppression that may not affect everybody. And it's an opportunity to demonstrate Rutland High School's acceptance of all races. It's a fact that a black student has a different experience than a white student in our high school and almost every high school in Vermont. By flying the flag, we give a sense of social awareness to the community and create more engagement and creating an equal environment for everybody. Raising the flag will allow us to stand up for what we believe in and join a fight that our whole country is in right now. The Black Lives Matter flag is more than just a flag. It's a symbol of inclusion and acceptance for all students, teachers, and community members. Thank you.
Questions?
First of all, I want to apologize for you, for you having to go through that in the school day. Nobody should undergo that. I will preface my comments by first saying that I have a son who's Hispanic and a grandson, two granddaughters, that are Hispanic. And my grandson plays basketball and was at a visiting D4 school. And he was spit in the face and called racial slurs to get him so upset that he ended up actually getting a technical in the game down there. So he got thrown out. I'm torn on this, I'll be honest with you, because the other part of me says if we do this, then we would need to look at the rainbow flag and others, so that way we can see all diversity that's there. I'm a collector of children. I have a daughter up in Canada that we took in years ago who is in a same-sex relationship and has conceived a child. So I know what she goes through on a daily basis. We've had exchange students and you're right, Rutland is not sometimes the most welcoming community. I'll be the first one to say that. We were at Applebee's and I thought my wife was gonna take out some old couple sitting there when we were with our exchange student from Korea along with our, my son who's Hispanic. But I guess I'm gonna ask is that where, where do we really, and I understand about the flag, I truly do. Don't get me wrong, I would be probably the first one to make a recommendation to fly it. But I'm torn, because where do we draw the conclusions of the differences between the Black Lives Matter flag, the UN flag, the flag, the rainbow flag, okay, who I would also like to see flown too? Is there, where do we do that? I guess I'm looking for you guys for advice here, because you guys are the ones who deal with it every day, not me. And will this create an issue by not allowing others, groups, like the Gay Straight Alliance, coming to us and saying we'd like to fly the rainbow flag, which I would probably be the same with you guys, asking them the same question? So I turn it over to you for a response.
It would really be about that group going to the school board and presenting on it and whether or not you guys would want to take that stand, because it is the school board's flag poll and that's why we're coming to you, because it really is your decision of whether or not you want to make this statement or not.
I'm not disagreeing with you guys and what I'm saying about that statement. And sorry that I'm going on for so long, but this is kind of emotional for me, as you can tell. I just want to make sure that we're addressing all groups, that we literally have taken into consideration those who are different ethnicity, those who have different religious backgrounds, those who have different gender backgrounds, gender orientation, sexual preferences. I don't, I think we all need to, I see the discrimination unfortunately against all the parties involved. So is there some way, what, I guess what I'm saying is what would, how can we do this so that we can make that statement? And I understand the flag, I guess, maybe I'm not clear. Come back to me.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a crazy question? How many flag poles do we have and where are they?
Maybe Mr. Olson can answer.
We have one on the football field, so it's in the
No, it's in the front.
No, there's one in the football field too. Oh, yeah, there's two. There's two.
There's one in front. There's one in between the field hockey field and the football field.
And what's there now?
There's nothing flying on the football field one, I don't think, right now.
An American and a Vermont flag, I think.
Do we have the United, so we don't have a separate flag pole? So we'd have to get a flag pole?
I think you would be able to fly all three.
I'm just, I mean, I'm wondering about logistics, like where, I mean, we have them flying at the University of Vermont and they switch in and out early.
That's
Because there's three flag poles, so we've got United States, State of Vermont, and then there's a third one up at the Davis Center, but I was just wondering about logistics, like.
And that switches in and out, you said?
That does, but that doesn't mean that that's how we'd have to do it here. I just didn't know about, you know, because we can't take down the United States flag. Maybe we can, but that's something, that'd be wild. So we might need another pole, that's what I'm saying.
So um, my question was, uh, you know, similar to Hurley's, had, had you given any thought, I know it can be perceived to diminish the significance of flying the Black Lives Matter flag if we're, say, you know, we're only flying it for this time period. But I did go back, you know, and, and look, you know, did an online search of, of how other places handle this and, you know, that flag is, you know, flown in the month of February or, or, um, and again, I, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, if you feel that it diminishes your cause, um, because right now no one is before us asking to fly a flag. But then we also could come to a crux where someone does and then it could be taken out of context if that flag were removed to hang another flag. If we didn't have some chronological plan in place, if that. So kind of if you guys had tossed around any of these ideas or, or had any personal feelings, I know you guys have done a great job expressing yourselves and very, very difficult um, matter that, you know, shouldn't be in your laps that is.
Well, one of the things that students have talked about, um, uh, was the symbolism in raising the flag, first of all, obviously, which is significant and as Jamison, the picture he chose from um, Montpelier High School was of them raising the flag, but I am familiar and the students are familiar with the fact that, um, other schools have raised them, for example, as you said, February, which is, um, you know, African-American History Month, yeah, Black History Month. So that's certainly, and when you bring up the logistics, obviously, I think that that's a, a piece of consideration, but I, I do want to draw the attention to not just the flag, but um, the sort of plan that they've proposed. So the, the idea being that the flag is a stat. And then there is a larger plan put in place, which is really something that all of the New Neighbor students were, um, really adamant about that, that this was not a, a one-off basically.
Leave it to me again. Mr. Bliss, I'm going to put you on the spot. I know, isn't it great? Um, I know a year or two ago, we had a discussion about some training and I hear a buzz that the training could be occurring. Um, this, could you address that for us, please? Because I think that's something to, because this has been ongoing for a number of years.
Sure. So uh, if you're, if you're a member of our faculty or staff, you know that this week, as a matter of fact, we've got a training coming from the Peace and Justice Center up in Burlington and the topic is about understanding racism. And it's really about trying to make sure that everybody in our community gets a little foundation so that we can better understand each and every human being that comes into our community. We have to face it, just like these guys said, this is one of the whitest places in the world and uh, so we can't always say that although we want to appreciate all human beings, we can't always say that we understand how they think and feel. And we don't, because look at me, look at them, look at what I endure, which is just about nothing, look what they endure, which is more. Um, so some time ago, we started reading under Mary Moran's leadership, this book, Courageous Conversations About Race. And that was, as these guys said, in two thousand fifteen sixteen, we were talking about welcoming, um, refugees here in town. Um, last winter, I went around to schools and I gave a presentation called, uh, Discomfort is the Ally of Learning. And I did that for each and every faculty in the district. And the foundation of that or the spark of that, as these guys said, we had a, an issue at one of our schools and um, as it turns out, there were some, and I want to discuss it completely because I might identify some students, which wouldn't be right. But there were some, there were some racial undertones and as I talked to friends about it, what I figured out was, uh, as somebody told me, oh Bliss, you're just, you're just peeling the onion a little bit here, it's underneath there, it's deep. And so that's why I went around to the faculty to say, how, for me, how have we failed our students that they could grow to be a certain age and still have, um, racial thoughts and feelings and not really appreciate their fellow students, that we have failed. And so I asked each faculty for help. And then Ms. Gardner and Madame heard, heard that and asked me to come and drop by and see these guys at New Neighbors and I said, you guys are the most powerful voices in the, in the community, can you help me in some way? So I appreciate they're here and especially about talking about the uh, the Equity Committee, which Equity Inclusion Committee, which is, uh, which is a great idea. So after that, last June, uh, we started searching for professional development. We actually had, I think it was Ms. Pensac who sat here and asked me at one point, you were going to do some bias training, right? And I said, absolutely. Um, and so we, we went out and we shopped around for what districts in Vermont had successful professional development with different entities. We sought out, uh, references for different agencies around the Northeast. We talked to an outfit in Washington DC, Washington Consultant Group. And they were actually working at the Social Justice Institute at UVM and the Student Experience. And we really liked them, but they were pretty expensive. Um, so we sought more and we came up with the Peace and Justice Center in Burlington, which also does an excellent job and has great references and they're coming by, uh, just to help us get a foundation and understanding. So for us as a school community, it's important for us to just to start to grow our understanding because we are evolving as a community. There's no question about it. And if we don't start to understand more, that evolution can be a little more troublesome. As it is right now, we have a really good community. This is what, this is what Student Voice is all about. You know, you guys are here teaching us. And I'm so proud of these guys for standing up. I want to reach out. When, when nobody's looking, I'll give you a hug. Especially if you win on Sunday. But uh, so I want you to know that A, I'm really proud of these people, these young folks and their classmates for stepping up and making this request. But I want you to know, this is our entire school community and our Rutland community is evolving and this is one way we can, we can embrace and help everybody feel welcome. I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, it does. And I, and I also think I'm going to tag on with what Joanne said. I think we just kind of need to know the logistics of how we would do this.
Sure. Um, Rob, so um, just to clarify then, this training's been in the works since June?
Absolutely.
Training that's happening next week?
In fact, last spring, Mary Moran actually asked me to reach out to somebody to see what we could do for administration in the summertime. We couldn't get it together for the summer. Um, we actually shot for it for last fall, which is where we had had a similar discussion. We couldn't get it together between the logistics and prices and things. Um, but we're real happy that we're going to welcome, uh, Peace and Justice Center and they're ready to come and work with us.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Mike?
I think the Black Lives Matter, I think all Lives Matters, so uh, I think it's become a group that's become really political now. Maybe more so than it was originally, I think, started. But I, I am against racism. I'll get, I'll give you a little background. Uh, I was born and brought up in Burlington. Lived across the street from a black family. Frankie Washington, brothers, sisters. Slept in his house, hundred times. In his house. There was no black, white. Played cowboy Indians and all that stuff. When I got, uh, I joined the service and I went to Vietnam. And that's where I got the racism. I became a nigger lover. Because I made friends with, uh, everybody. So I, my last name is Blow. So about being picked on and bullied or, I got it all. I've been through the police academy. I'm an ex-police officer. So some of this racism stuff is obviously not, back when I was in the police academy is not because of Vermont being so white. There was not many issues with the black people. So I mean, I don't think we ever got taught stuff that way and I'm sure now it's a whole lot different. So I think all lives matter, not, I think everybody and I just, about where we put one flag or how we, obviously it's how we treat people. I do get your feelings. My mother's from Ireland. My two brothers were born in New York City. And if anybody knows any history about the Irish, they were treated terrible. No Irish allowed, no, nothing. So I know a little bit about some of that from my brothers and my mother. So it's kind of like, I kind of get where you're coming from. I really do. And I just, but I don't know if a flag answers our questions. I think more of a a process of teaching people, obviously. And I think, um, I don't know. Okay, that's all I got. Thanks.
First of all, I love your ideas about the committee and the training. I think that is priceless in terms of, of what we have to do. I am less concerned about having the equity of flags. I think when you support anyone that is going through and, you know, uh, uh, there's a discrepancy and, and, and inequality, you're supporting everybody that way. So I, I, I would not be opposed to a flag or, um, but I think the, what you're requesting is far more exciting for me because I think that is where the, there, that, that is where the money is, you know, um, and I do underst- I, I I do feel like we have to capture the, the, the experience, maybe not by living it, by, by, but by acknowledging that there are, are separate experiences for people that have separate type of, of situation, um, that you cannot undo. You cannot undo your skin color, you cannot do, I cannot undo my accent as much as I try and, you know, when there's, when there's discussion about foreign, foreigners or, or people from other countries, you know, that becomes something that I'm very aware of when I speak. So those things that we cannot undo and we shouldn't, um, I think it will be a great value for our whole community to support those experiences that are not supported on a daily basis.
So I just, um, kind of circling back to one of your suggestions that you guys had talked about, um, having more diversity in, in the teachers, in staff. Um, and so I, I guess some of my thoughts are how, how would, what would that look like in terms of how would we possibly get there? And being that right now we're a declining student population, so it's not like we're actively often hiring new staff. Um, and, you know, the local population is, is getting more diverse, but we're certainly not there. So has there been any thought into putting, um, I know, you know, more at college level, a lot of places will have guest teachers that would address certain subjects, maybe sometimes recurrent to develop, develop some of the relationships, um, provide some different instruction or just kind of a logistic me thinking like, how would we head towards that goal? And one of the things that you have requested.
That was, yeah, that one was more of like a thought, like, because like we don't really control that, so like, um, we were kind of just thinking like, I don't know, like, like for example, like when Mr. Taylor started working here, I mean, it's just like comforting to have like, um, people of different races and stuff working in our school system. It's just, I don't know, it's just kind of a good thing. And, but yeah, that was more of just an idea. We haven't put too much thought into it because we don't really know how we, how that would happen yet, but yeah.
You would come back and be a teacher. You'd be a good teacher.
So. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, hold that thought. Hold that thought for a second. Um, I have a, is it okay, I have a few quick questions and maybe. So, um, I guess three, three questions that I have, I was just kind of jotting down. You know, and, and you, again, you look at the Me Too movement and there's, there's a number of others where I think we should, you know, this, this is like a start in, in a sense, um, from a, have we researched what we're allowed to put on the flag pole? This is question one. And I, I don't know and I might have to, I don't know if Mr. Olson or actually well, if Mr. Taylor would know. You know, my second question is how much education have we done within the schools? Uh, you should be an integral part of that, you know, like teaching. Have we brought outside people in to discuss, um, you know, um, racism or, and, and some, you know, some of the other things that are occurring, any type of. You know, so what have we done at a school level? Are we, is it part of the curriculum? Is, I'm going to pick on Ms. Ms. Gardner. Is she teaching that in her class? You know, student level discussions, you know, speakers of that. And then the third question is, you know, no, really not the third question. So, but are we able to, you know, are we doing enough educating? And it sounds like Mr. Mr. Bliss has, they have some, some plans with staff. What are we doing for the students? I don't know if you can answer some of that.
So it is, it is legal, I mean, to put the, to put the Black Lives Matter flag on there. It's not a crime. Or against, against any laws or anything like that. Um, from the perspective of curriculum and, and staff training, you all know probably as well as the rest of us that, uh, there are so many demands, um, put on the schools uh, in a variety of ways, um, curriculum and otherwise. And, um, so there has been a movement on the part of a number of people who did some work last summer to try to integrate uh, pieces of, um, historical concepts surrounding racism, certainly, and, and try to integrate those into, um, a variety of different classrooms at all levels. In terms of, uh, staff education, I'm sure it doesn't come as any surprise to anyone in this room that I've been pushing for this sort of thing for a while. And, um, Rob and I have spoken a number of times over the past couple of years. Sometimes, um, you know, I shoot off an email to all the administrators and they're like, oh, there she goes again and we gotta have a conversation about it, but um, certainly the Peace and Justice Center coming this Friday is a really good start. Um, but it is a small start. Um, and it is a small, 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 small piece. Um, and as you can imagine, a lot of what we've been doing, uh, in professional development, in, in service has a lot to do with, uh, standards-based grading and, and things that we have done as initiatives as part of the school, um, over the past fourteen years that I've been here. Standards-based grading would be like the newest one that we've done. So we haven't done a lot around this, within the context of staff training. You know, in the classroom, uh, I teach history. I teach world history to freshmen. And so it's, um, it doesn't lend itself necessarily to, uh, the systematic and institutional racism that has been experienced by people of color in this country, um, for over four hundred years. Uh, however, we do certainly talk about current events. Um, and the students, um, you know, they talk sometimes and we, we have conversations. Um, New Neighbors specifically, you know, is, is very interested in educating the student body um, and have made attempts to do that in a number of different ways, some, um, better received than others. But you know, to, to institute a curriculum, first of all, I don't, I don't know what that sort of curriculum, um, would look like. It's a very broad one. Um, to say, you know, the history of racism in the United States, for example. Uh, it could be certainly and, um, and some of us have taken classes like that, uh, and, you know, in college. Um, but there is a, a movement on the part of many teachers who would like to see more of these kinds of pieces that address broad issues in our community, um, racism certainly being one of them. New Neighbors is actually going to be doing a presentation. New Neighbors is actually going to be doing a presentation during the GINN conference on transgender issues and transgender rights. And so that's another piece that we're looking at. As the former advisor to the Gay-Straight Alliance, I can say that we've done education pieces around that as well. So I think it's something that there is a passion for, among at least some people, within the district as a whole. But it is also a challenge, to try to figure out how to fit it in amongst the many, many, many things that, obviously, you all know that we, we do every day, so.
Mr. Lieutenant Taylor, I think, you had a question?
No, I didn't have a question. I had some information for the board. So, there are a few things, and thank you for your presentation, you know, some of those really hit home, with me in particular. There are some things happening within the state. First of all, there's Act 54 that, that's been put before the state legislature, about racial bias and how it's taught in schools. And they're looking for people to participate in the development of that, development potentially of possible curriculum, to really talk about the differences. Throughout the state, Vermont superintendents are all engaged in race, in equity conversations, and we're, we're really focusing on race, even though we know that there are intersections between race. There's race, there's gender, there's sexual orientation, there's male, female within that, but the focus we really have is on race. And nationally, there's a big conversation, I mean, this is a conversation that was happening in California, race and equity and inclusion, and what are we as educators doing? So it, it's a national thing as well. And finally, there, there is a flag code. The flag code states that only the US, the state, and the POW/MIA flags can be flown, according to our legal counsel. But they also said there, there are really no teeth. And this flag and other flags, there, there are the gay/lesbian flags, the rainbow flag that flies in places, there are the Black Lives Matters flag that fly in places. And so there really are no teeth in the law. Nobody has ever been punished for it. And so, that's what I have for you.
I would like to make a motion that as long as...
Well, it depends, is it an action motion, a referral motion? Point of order, I'm curious as to what the objective is. Is it final?
It's actually my, I, I would like to make a motion to have them come back with the logistics of how, where we would fly it, if we needed an additional flagpole, all of that stuff, so we can make that informed decision, you know, with making sure that we could. And I, I guess what I'm saying is, I am for it if we can logistically figure everything out. So, I would like to make a motion...
Can I modify that motion? Could I ask that it go to the policy?
Can he make it first? He hasn't made a motion.
Oh, let me...
Then make the motion.
Make the motion.
Okay. I would make the motion that this student group and advisor come back to us with the logistics of flying the Black Lives Matter, and how that would be seen, you know, how we could do it, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
So we do have, just so you know, we have, like, a fairly decent outline of the plan for how we would do it. The students have actually been, we were just talking about that earlier today, that they've been working on this since last March, actually, when they brought it up as something they wanted to take up as a major issue for them for this school year. So, that would come about in short order. And I was familiar with the flag code, and I knew, we had Googled that, as you can imagine, done a little bit of research on that, and that there was no, no, there had been no issues in Vermont, in terms of those, those flags.
And I just want clarity.
Absolutely.
I think, you know, I just want the logistics of how, when, and, you know, why, if...
Yeah, and it certainly wouldn't be done under the cover of night.
But I don't have a second, so we can't discuss that.
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Second for discussion.
And I would, I would also offer a possible amendment to include discussion with administration, facilities, and finance, so they can have all their questions answered, all the options, and support that they need to get this thing running.
That they could go through administration, per se. I have no problem with amending my motion to having the students go to all the administration and the proper people, such as building and grounds, you know. You need to have access to everybody to get everything in order, is what I think she's tried to say. And you should have that. I amend that motion to that, yes.
Can I speak first, please? I'm a parent of one of these children, and I work at a school that has the Black Lives Matter flag. So, we are required to have a certain amount down the rope, from the US flag, the Vermont flag, and then further down is the Black Lives Matter, all in one pole, all in one rope. There is no expense for this. Also, as an HR person, it kind of makes me very nervous that the school board is asking the students how to increase the diversity of our, of our teachers. That is your guys' job, that is your HR manager's job. It is not our students' job to figure out how to increase the diversity. And I am an HR person, so I deal with that daily, so that concerns me greatly, that you guys are asking three teenage boys how to increase the diversity of our teaching staff.
I don't think I'm asking that.
Actually, I, I think maybe you misinterpreted my question. I, I was saying we are under constraints, that we don't chronically have a turnover in staff, and if the, if they had given any consideration to guest teachers, other people that we could get in the schools in a more timely fashion, and just...
Right, but I also think that there's many different types of HR groups, and different types of recruiting groups that you can use to diversify it. So it's not just, I just don't think it's on your radar enough, so maybe that's why you weren't aware of what is out there to increase, help increase diversity within your staff. So I don't want to go...
And, yeah, and like I say, my only concern is the logistics, and you did enlighten me on one of the logistics, which I was not aware of.
Okay.
Okay, so, that's what I was kind of looking for, to figure out what we legally can do, logistically we can do, to do it. I'm not opposed to it. And, and I stated that, but I just want to make sure we know the logistics of it, of how, you know...
And I, I mean, I don't want to end on such a, on a negative note, but I also want to make note that Mr. Bliss did help me tremendously with the situation with my son. So, you know, the administration has been very supportive, and I just think this is another way for the school, and especially the school board, the rural community, to show support for these students as well.
Do I need to amend my motion again?
No.
I'm not going to speak. I, I like his motion, and I think we should vote on it, that's okay.
Okay, well, I didn't get an opportunity to add my amendment before somebody else got ahead of me. Well, I would like it to go to the building committee and the policy committee, because we need to have more of a debate, because we have First Amendment issues, that while we may want to have encouraging positive messages, there's also potential First Amendment that would say that we have to be content neutral. And so my concern is, if not having a policy in place that says this is why we're doing it, we run into the problem of having inconsistent behavior, and then we have more problems. So, one of the things I think somebody asked you in terms of, would it be an acceptable first step to fly it for 30 days, or you, it's, the flag has to fly all the time, or that's, you know, is that a failure if you got a partial step for a 30-day during February? I didn't get specifics as to, you want the flag flown, I'm just asking, under what conditions are you asking for?
So, under, hold that thought.
I guess we're in the middle of a motion, maybe.
Are you, are you accepting that?
Your motion said that they would come back with specifics, is that correct?
Yeah, but I think it was to the board, not to committees.
To the board, and I'm okay with that. I don't think the building committee needs to get involved.
Well, because they might actually have to raise the flag.
I'll second his motion.
Well, first of all, my motion's on the floor.
His motion is on the floor, so he has to...
He can second the amendment.
I have not amended it.
He has to accept a friendly amendment.
I have to accept the amendment. I, I have a concern, Cam, I'll be honest with you. My concern is that if we send it to all these committees, it'll never happen for another five years.
And they're all seniors.
They're all seniors. So, I think that the policy committee certainly can bring it up, but I would like them to come back with the logistics, like you said, at our next meeting. This is not a motion to say yes, it's a motion to say, come back, tell us the logistics and how you want to do things, and we then will vote on it then, which is then going to give us time to discuss this later, today. And so that way, we can have an open discussion about this, if we need to have it.
And Cam, you can always put it on the agenda of our policy meeting.
I would, and I would say that it would be subject to policy, but I do believe that the, that, and a second motion that I wouldn't mind doing is saying that the policy committee would need to look at something like this, if we have anything there.
Well, and I would like them to come to that, because the problem is, when we're in this type of environment, I'm kind of feeling railroaded, because the issue has been brought up, it made the agenda a couple of times. I've seen nothing in paper in terms of the proposal.
Well, and that's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying, what we need to see is the logistics of that, and that's going to give us the time and opportunity to have deliberations once we see all the logistics. And I'm looking at Ms. Gardner now, now that you guys did a hell of a good job.
You guys have seen enough, yeah.
But, you know, would that be, understand, you know what I'm saying, because I have questions on that.
Yeah, and like I said, we have a basic outline of what we're looking for, and I'm happy to submit it to the board before the kid, before our kids come back, if they need to, or I can represent them, certainly.
Please, I think that's what we would like to see.
Okay, so, we have a motion. You're accepting the amendment. Wait.
Allison's amendment, yes.
I'm, I'm, sorry, Allison, yes.
Yes, yeah.
And what about mine? Because the idea that we're going to try...
I can tack on to the, I can tack on to this motion, if it's okay with Allison, she seconded, that the policy committee take it up in a future meeting. But I don't want to make them contingent upon the policy committee, you know what I'm saying? I think we need to see that in the future, what that is.
I guess I'm confused.
I would amend the amendment, to, I, I think we should take this up, actually, as two separate motions.
Okay, so let's do my motion first, and then we'll, I'll make a motion about going to policy.
Okay.
I make the motion that they come back to us with the logistics of everything, getting the proposal together for enough so we could actually review it prior to the next meeting.
Well, I have a problem with next meeting, because we're reorganizing next meeting. And we have a competitive clerks race during next time, so I don't want to short-circuit them.
I don't think it's, that's generally not a, that's not a timely issue.
It will take longer, and we're adding one new person, so...
Yeah, yeah, so, and, isn't that what we said, Allison?
So, yes, and in, to the group, again, to work with facilities and administration...
Yes.
...in order to develop their full plan.
Yes, perfect.
And they're going to do that in two weeks?
Yeah, they are. Yeah, they're superstars.
Do they already have a blueprint?
Because it sounds like they've done a lot already.
Do we have a second?
She seconded it.
Second, okay, so we're going to vote on this, then.
Well, except that, now that we have a final motion, we should be debating the actual language. So the fact that people have already predetermined that the motion is acceptable, and there's no debate, once the motion has been amended, it starts the debate all over again.
So what's the, so what, so then what's the debate on the language?
Well, I think it ought to go to policy first, because you're putting the cart before the horse. Because it sounds like a fait accompli, that says if they check these boxes, you're going to say yes.
I never said that.
I know, I'm telling you how I interpret it.
And, but I, but I also don't want to delay something if we don't need to. And I need to see the logistics of them coming in, that's all.
I like Allison's idea that we debate the second motion.
And I don't think you're debating the motion right now, you're, you're not debating the motion that's on the table, you are debating trying to make a different motion. So I think we just need to move, point of order, and move ahead to vote on the motion that's on the table.
Okay, so we, you've shared your concerns, you know, we've discussed this, you've, you know, is there anyone else who has concerns with this motion?
I agree with Cam that it has to go to the policy. We have everything else in policy, you read the state laws, or whatever it is for flagpoles, whatever it might be, POW flag's not even there either, we don't have it on our flagpoles. So there's other issues, obviously, for flags. So I think we need a concrete policy decision, how we're going to hang flags.
Can I ask for clarification on what policy committee is?
It's a subcommittee of the board, so that we are supposed to...
Of the policies of the school board.
Actually, I hate to pick on Assistant Superintendent Bliss, but if you could share, he's the, he's our chief policy.
Sure, so, the role of the policy committee is to decide, to recommend policies to the Board of School Commissioners, to decide what policies govern the operations of the school district. In this situation, in my opinion, because you asked me up here, if you try to make a policy about First Amendment rights, it's a long haul. Our next policy meeting is April 11th. Certainly, if the board decides to send something to policy committee, it's, I am only staffing that committee, but the policy committee would take it up and discuss it. Don't know if there's any other information I can give you.
No, thank you, yes.
I think Cam's is a separate thing. I think these young people can come back to the next meeting, and provide us with all the information that they can provide us with, and then we could take it up at the policy meeting on April 11th with all that information. They don't need to come to the policy. I, I think it's a separate thing.
Right, right.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm just asking for them to come back with the logistics.
With the logistics.
Now, there won't be a motion that follows that night to say we're going to implement the request.
There might be. There could be, you can't control that.
I can't control that, but there could be, but maybe not. What I want to know is the logistics, and they're giving it to us in advance.
This is democracy, Cam.
Call the question.
I'm not your parliamentarian, but you had a motion on the floor in a second, and your question was called.
So, I don't, I'm trying to understand, what is, what is the problem with it going to policy? Because I guess that's, I'm trying to figure out, what is the, what's the problem?
Because it's going to take three months.
It's going to take three months, and we can still send it to policy next time, but they can come back with us and give us all the information.
I just want to know all the informations, I want to know the logistics.
Before they graduate.
I want to know the logistics to be able to make an informed decision if I were to make a motion next meeting to fly the flag or not. I'm not asking for the motion to fly it, I'm asking for a motion to know the logistics prior to that.
Okay, so, we have a motion, we have a second. So, roll call.
A, yay.
No.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
You can abstain, you don't have to go one way or the other.
Abstain.
And so will I.
Okay, so we had...
Three, four.
Four...
Out of how many of us are here?
One, no, two abstentions.
Two abstentions. Do I need to...
No, passes.
Well, no, that gets us below the, the, I think abstentions are not counted as present. So I think that lowers your numbers, that you don't have six anymore.
I don't, no, I don't believe so.
Simple majority.
Yeah, because you had a choice.
It's a simple majority, as long as we have a quorum.
Exactly. Okay, so we're going to see you, folks, I'm not, unfortunately, my last meeting. Thank you, thank you so much. You're going to come back with, you know, with your task with, come back, give, give us the details, and then we'll go from there, so.
Is it possible for anyone else to just speak, just two seconds?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I've been listening to this, and what I'm hearing is, these students said that there has been systemic racism in Vermont, and it's everywhere, and we're not dealing with it. They've asked for something very simple, to raise a flag. I hear this board, they're come to you to celebrate diversity, whether it is rainbow or black. I'm not hearing a board that celebrates diversity. I hear fear of what's next. You know, who else is going to want to, them, for them being different, want to be celebrated? And we can do this as a board. You have the ability. It is not the students' job to get you information. You're kicking it down the road. It's time to just say, we have four, five high schools that have done this, you have three flagpoles. It is so simple.
But sir, I can just tell you, you told me more information than I know, now we're three flagpoles, I thought we only had one. And see, that's, that's all I'm really looking for, guys.
We're two at the high school.
Okay.
You're not, you're missing the points, sir.
But I, I, I understand your point.
There's other points. There are many points.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I...
I think you don't know our motives either.
Okay, so, thank you, thank you.
We'll see you next time.
They're looking to you as leaders.
We appreciate it. What is the date?
What's the date of the next one?
Twenty-sixth.
March...
March 26th.
Tonight, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, that's a tough act to follow.
Yeah, glad it's tripling, not me.
Okay, so...
That's part of education.
Your name, sorry. Okay, so, next on the agenda is the Triple E report and pre-K update. Okay, so, next on the agenda is the Triple E report and pre-K update. I believe Assistant Superintendent Bliss, McGary.
Jess Henderson.
Hi Jess.
It's just going to take me a minute to get this picked up, but while I'm doing this, you all have your presentations. Why doesn't Ellie get started?
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm going to present the Triple E part, early essential education, and Rob will present the pre-K information. And Jess Henderson is our coordinator of support services for birth through grade two, and oversees the essential early education program at Pure Point Primary Learning Center and our outreach program. So we may have some questions that I wouldn't know, and she's here to help answer. So, right now, our primary home base of our early essential education program is at the Pure Point Primary Learning Center. There we have, it's a fully licensed Child Development Division of State of Vermont Child Care Program. It's accredited by the Step Ahead Recognition System, which is called STARS in the state, with five stars being the highest availability that someone can reach. Right currently, we are four stars at that center. And we have a plan in place, and Jess told me tonight that we may be very shortly getting our five stars. So that's good news. Lessons are aligned with the Vermont Early Learning Standards in the state of Vermont, and individual goals are set to meet developmental and functional levels of our students. We collaborate that program with Head Start, where Head Start promotes readiness for three- to five-year-olds. It's a high-quality program that we serve with Rutland Community Health, Rutland Mental Health Center, oversees the Rutland Community Partners and Community Care Network. Thank you, I couldn't think of the title. And they oversee the Head Start program. And currently, Head Start provides three Head Start early childhood educators. In that center, we also have an early childhood special educator, which the school district provides, and paraeducators. So, we have that at the Pure Point Primary Learning Center. To become eligible for early essential education, it's based on two main criteria. You have to have a developmental delay, and it has to be found in one or more five developmental areas, which are communication, adaptive development, social, emotional, physical development, or cognitive skills. Or the child would have to have a medical condition diagnosed by a licensed physician, such as autism, Down Syndrome, or a genetic disorder. We also have an early childhood special educator and speech and language pathologist, OT, occupational therapist, physical therapist, that provide outreach services to eight different locations in our community. They're usually childcare centers or early childcare centers. So it's a parent-child center, Stafford Technical Center has an early childhood program there, the Vermont Achievement Center, Head Start at Meadow Street, and we have also four different daycare providers in the community, where we have students with disabilities that we provide services to. The supports that we have are cognitive skill development, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, and then we also have paraeducator support. The next slide shows where we've been since December 2005. So, how many students have we had in our program? So it shows, over the years, you can see the numbers fluctuate. Currently, as of December 1st, we're, December 1st, children with disabilities are counted across the United States. So we always use December 1st as our numbers. This past December 1st, we had 54 children identified in Rutland City with disabilities. As you can see, the numbers seem to be growing. As of today, I believe you said we had 63?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three, so they continuously, we continuously identify children as the year goes on. I will also let you know that we have seen over the past several years more significant disabilities coming into our programs, requiring more supports at that age level. More children with autism are being identified. So it's just making it more challenging staffing-wise to provide the supports necessary to the children that we're seeing in our early childhood program.
Deep breath. We're moving pretty fast tonight, so I'm going to take a deep breath. So my role is to talk about the universal pre-K side of this. Heard loud and clear earlier in the session how you all said, look, we seem to get the same information frequently, so there's some different information in this part of our presentation that I'm going to ask you to think about, and it may have some impact for how you advocate in terms of policy and what we do in a Rutland community and what we do around the state. So the first thing is just about Vermont's universal pre-K, which is Act 166, and it applies to three, four, and five-year-olds who aren't yet kindergarten. That, that law, that act, provides 10 hours per week of paid pre-K for people who can access it, and where you can find a spot. And it says for up to 35 weeks, and if that happens, if we get people that get to be a part of that, they access the funds to pay for that from the Education Fund of Vermont. Rutland's approach to universal pre-K is, as you may know, we have no established region. It used to be that you could limit your region, so you could say, since we're a Rutland City school district, we will not pay for any pre-K outside of Rutland City. For us, the capacity in Rutland City isn't enough, so if somebody has a spot outside of the city borders, they're welcome to enroll their, their child in a, a pre-qualified universal pre-K site, like Proctor or Killington, and they get the same benefit of a paid 10 hours a week for 35 weeks pre-K. And that's because the cost is borne by the entire state, and we need the capacity in the city, so out they go. We have a pre-K teacher leader, her name is Sarah Crossman, I'll name her because she's wonderful. And her job is to literally establish good relationships, work with our partners, support great teaching and learning, as an example. She's done work with parents in each site on what parents can do to kind of gamify learning new language skills and learning the skills kids might need early. She's done professional development in the sites around early language acquisition. We had some of our SLPs go and work on an evening event where we fed people, if they were care providers of any kind in Rutland City or outside, they wanted to come and learn about early language acquisition. It was a big help. We, we should do more of it. It's not easy to set it up and get people to come, because if you're a pre-K or daycare or childcare provider, you're busy seven in the morning until five o'clock at night, and then some. And we also support, if we have parents accessing local private independent providers, that's like, if, as an example, my children went to a home daycare, and if that person wanted to learn more about early language acquisition, we would, we would offer professional development there as well. Number of students accessing universal pre-K, for us, as of, it says February, but as of today, we're 137 pre-K kids. I got a new number from Sarah today. And if we enrolled, if we had 235 kids in universal pre-K, that's an estimate, because you can't get the count until they show up in kindergarten, we'd think we'd be at about 100% at that point. Funding. So, the big question around pre-K is how to fund it and make it sustainable. So LEAs, that's us, we're a school district in LEA. We count .46 of a student if we enroll a universal pre-K student. And that means for each one of those kids, 3,000, this year, $3,267 comes to the school district, and then we have to pay out a certain amount of that to each pre-K provider, and then we keep the difference. Actually, the amount that goes out, each student enrolled, people get $3,267, and the difference between that and the .46 ADM, we keep and we fund professional development, Sarah Crossman's position, and any kind of services we need for our pre-K kids that we can help with. There is a last, last, last year, and this got hung up at the end, was that they had this proposal to change ADM funding for this, and it would be centralized at the state level. It, in the end, it bogged down. I think the logistics of trying to manage hundreds of new accounts from the state's finance system out and back in was just too much, and it, and it got bogged down. So, where are the other pre-K children if they're not showing up at these universal pre-Ks? Some of them go to faith-based preschools, like Christ the King, Grace Congregational, and Little Lamb's. Those are all excellent preschools, but because they have a faith-based approach to this, they can't access public school funding. But I openly say, those guys are, those guys are great, and they do a great job, and they have different formats. In some of those places, you can go two days a week or three days a week. Generally, in universal pre-K, you go five days a week. And so, parents and families try to find a setting that works best for them, and, and they make it work. Some of them have a home daycare, and for the lucky ones that get to stay with their family, they might be right there. Successes and challenges. 137 students enrolled, our successes are 137 students enrolled, we got positive relationships with all of our partners. We have a weekly presence in each classroom, Sarah gets to every classroom that we interact with. Like I said, we do language-based learning and early language acquisition. We're working on strengthening families collaboration. There's legitimately a strengthening families program that we have, probably eight trainers just in our school district, that we offer to families and universal pre-Ks. And Sarah's our lead teacher. Challenges we have, sharing assessment from the assessment tool they have, which is called Teaching Strategies Gold, is a challenge. Not everybody gets to, to see and track the data, the state tracks the data. You have to have an account and load every kid in your own account. So our pre-K provider folks, they share that data with the state, and then the state makes use of it. We don't necessarily get to see it unless they download it for us. The capacity is a challenge in our city. There is, there's really, and this is true of early care across Vermont, and especially in our region, there's not enough early care or pre-K spots to meet the needs of people that need that. It just isn't there. So that's a challenge. There are different philosophies and different pre-Ks, and that can be a challenge. Maintaining high quality at all sites, one of the biggest challenges our pre-K partners have is, is securing and keeping licensed pre-K teachers. Because if I'm working at one of the pre-K sites, I might not get the best salary and benefit package. And then a job comes open at your local public school, and I go and take that job, or I move away and I get a better salary and benefit package. So for our pre-K providers, it's a challenge for them to keep a licensed and qualified teacher. Common kindergarten transition is always a challenge. All right. So, I'll talk a little bit more about the impact on our cohorts of enrolled students. I can tell you, it's pretty hard to tell, just because when you track students that had pre-K, students didn't have pre-K, what's the big impact of pre-K, it's not easy. For us, what we want is to focus on the social and emotional side of things that they can get in, in early education. If a student comes to school when they're in kindergarten, they can regulate their emotion behaviors, establish and sustain positive relationships, and participate cooperatively and constructively, the rest is gravy. And in fact, one of my philosophies that I've picked up in doing the Promise Community work and work with Project Vision, is in education now, public health is job one. If we have students that arrive at school that are happy and healthy, our jobs are easy. And the kids will learn like crazy. But the focus on public health and that kind of upstream thinking is where the real money's made these days. Or money's saved, I should say. So, each year, we do, all of our kindergarten teachers do what's called a kindergarten readiness survey. And to do this, I put that URL on there, it's on your packet. You can search the Agency of Education website for it, even if you want to just look for kindergarten readiness. And you can see comparative information about how the state does versus different districts. You can see our district. And I'll get to some of our information in a second, but I wanted you to see that to say, like, anybody can access it. You wouldn't go looking for it unless you wanted to. But it's called the kindergarten readiness survey, find it on the Agency of Education website, go bananas. It has back years of data, stuff like that. So that, that's a 34 item per child. Every one of our teachers fills out a survey on every one of our kids, 34 items on each kid. It takes time, it's not easy, it's subjective, and we really appreciate that they do it, because it allows for our community in this state to get the data. The five domains in that are physical development, health, social and emotional development, approaches to learning, communication, and cognitive development. And 28 of the items hit those five domains, just so you know, that's the only purpose of your next slide. This slide, six of the items attempt to cover the impact of hunger, illness, and fatigue on a child's learning. So as you're a teacher, you're going to, you're going to try to assess that. Is the child well-rested? Are they hungry when they arrive? Are they tired? So, this is the 1718 data for the kindergarten readiness survey. They didn't have the 1819 posted yet, but it'll be up soon, I'm sure. And 1920 then will follow. Hard to see on the TV, but just so you can see, across the state, the number of student surveys, 4,139. And then it breaks it down by how many kids, boys, girls, free reduced lunch, so on and so forth. That's the demographic information. Your next slide is kind of the demographics on Rutland City Public Schools for 1718. They give you the percentage of students in our demographics, so on and so forth. You can see for us, as far as the teachers' report, 50% of the kids attended publicly-funded pre-K, 60, 50% did not. That doesn't mean they didn't get a pre-K experience, they could have gone to one of the private ones, or maybe they went somewhere else, and it's possible they didn't. That's one of the pieces of data that's kind of vague here. So this is, this one is kindergarten ready, readiness, Rutland City versus Vermont, and how we break out. So this is, they take all those domains, and then they give you like, okay, what percentage of your students are quote, "ready for kindergarten," based on the input from the, the teachers that we have. It's a subjective input, but they do it with their best information. So, blue is Vermont, and this orange-red color, whatever it is. Any artists out there know what color that is? That's Rutland. And so you can see, you know, you have to look closely, right Cam?
Yeah, look at that, yeah, yeah.
You can see that it looks like 83, 83.9% of all students in Vermont are ready versus 61% of the Rutland kids. 80% of the boys in Vermont, 52% of the, the boys in Rutland. 87% of the girls are ready in Vermont, and roughly 70% of the girls in Rutland. On the kids with, that are on free reduced lunch, 74% in Vermont, 45% in Rutland. Not free reduced, 90% in Vermont, 72 in Rutland. If they went to a public pre-K, they say that 84% of those kids are ready in Vermont, but only 51% in Rutland. And if they didn't attend, 83% of those kids are ready, and 71% of the kids in Rutland. So you can see that in Rutland, according to the survey, a lot of our, a lower percentage of our students are quote, "ready for kindergarten." Greater need in early education. So, over the last three years, the percentage of Vermont students who are ready increased by 2%. And at the same time, the percentage of students in Rutland who are ready decreased by 8%. So there's an, there's an inverted relationship there. I need the, the student students, I need to got correlations and stuff. This piece of data here is one of the ones that I cite about public health also. This comes from Rutland Regional Medical Center's Blueprint for Community Health. I cite this when I speak around the community about the importance of Project Vision and Promise Community and public health. And this is, what this chart shows is the percent, first of all, a couple of bullets. Rutland City Public Schools ranks fifth in poverty in the state in terms of school districts, fifth most impoverished. We need more access to high, high-quality early care. And that last little chart is about Rutland Regional Medical Center's tracking of opiate-exposed births. And if you look at the green bar in the middle, it gives you the percent of births at Rutland Regional Medical Center in those years that were quote, "opiate-exposed." And the one that I focus on this year is 2013. And if you look at 2013, 14, you'll see that 16.6% of the births at Rutland Regional Medical Center were opiate-exposed. So that means, if I say, we're going to enroll in 2018, pick a round number, because it's easy to do the math, 200 kindergarten kids, 16.6% of those, or 33.2, will have been opiate-exposed at their birth. To me, the bigger question is, that means they have families that are either, either living with active addiction or recovery, both of which situations come with needs for- come with needs for various supports, so on and so forth. And if I'm opiate-exposed at birth, chances are, my development was different than what somebody might consider the norm. The reason the medical center shows this is because it's a winning slide. Over time, we're decreasing the percentage of opiate-exposed births through education and prevention. That's a good thing. That's why they show it. And we'll see a decrease in that. But for us, and as a view for education and a view through public health, this is a pretty big issue. I showed it to you, so you understand, like, these are the kind of supports and things we think about as a region. And as a state, if we're advocating, we say, okay, we still have a concern. I want to let you know, this is not unique to Rutland. This is not a Vermont thing. This is not a Rutland thing. This is a national thing, but this is our data. And people ask me all the time, whoa, it's so bad in Rutland. I say, look, it's bad all over. It's an epidemic. Read the news. It's in there. But this is our data. Okay. Questions for consideration? What would pre-K look like in Rutland if it was at a world-class level? How can we support increasing capacity and quality, and what is the impact of a large universal pre-K on preparedness? Action taken this year and possible action moving forward, increased mental health case manager and counselors at the primary level, small class sizes in kindergarten, pushing interventions in the kindergarten. Next year, greater focus on relationship and skills. And actually, we talked about the importance of slowing down to speed up in the end. And working with our teammates, who are classroom teachers and REA members, is the importance of establishing relations, establishing routines, establishing trust, establishing comfort before we storm into academics, because it pays off in the end. Kids who feel safe and secure and loved, those are the ones that are going to do well. Okay? And we're looking at how do we configure our kindergarten classes. That's just a consideration. I even had conversations today, and the logistics of that might be a challenge, but we're always thinking about how do we best transition in kindergarten, how we support these kids the most, because they're going to be around for thirteen years. And so, we do our jobs well early. We set ourselves up for success later. That's a lot to think about, pretty fast, but we wonder, all three of us, if you have any questions that we can help you with on this topic?
Questions, Allison.
So, with the dwindling capacity, the need for more early education, I know, what was it, five years ago when they rolled out universal pre-K, the state was against the school opening their own program because they wanted to support the local providers. With this shift, is there any chance or opportunity for a school to be more proactive as a provider themselves?
Yeah. Schools that have the space capacity, they can pull this off. And I was discussing this in Promise Community, you know, six, eight months ago. I need one billionaire. If I had one billionaire, we could open a world-class early education and community health center, maybe two billionaires, because then what we'd have to do is we'd have to school a number of early education educators, make sure, and I said, what about local people? We'll school them up and we'll hire them. We'll give them benefit packages, whatever. That's the real answer to the highest quality pre-K that you see in the country is, it's, and I testified at the legislature about this, the best quality pre-K, it's expensive. You have really high-quality staff, and you're not selective. Everybody can access it. So, for us, it's a little ways away. How do we overcome capacity issues? It's a challenge because our state legislature, as you know, they look at cost factors too. And they say, like, wow, for us to go real high-quality, world-class pre-K, pretty much have to triple that cost. So, for us, what we can do, we keep trying to support people who are trying to get their certification or their pre-qualification. Sarah's a big help with that. We try to support them in the community. For us, as a district, that'd be a big discussion. I'm happy to start it up and have a discussion with the community or anybody about the possibilities of that. The cost would be pretty big to us and then to taxpayers. But the research is that, you know, the more you spend early, the less you spend later, and like, for every dollar, you save three or four. But that, it's the sticker shock that gets people. They go like, whoa, that's a big investment to get started.
Thank you for, I don't remember if we had the kindergarten readiness last, last year, because this is very useful information. So, it seems like, and this may be my perception, so correct me, that we have less available preschool spots or slots in Rutland right now. It seems like things have shrunk in terms of the availability from like five years ago.
Yeah.
So, the access to the universal pre-K is, would we, could we establish a time of, are people accessing it more now versus three years or two years ago, or less?
I can go back, get you all the numbers. I know the highest we've been on registered universal pre-K kids is high one-forties, one-forty-eight, one-forty-nine. The lowest we've been is, you know, one-twenty-nine at the beginning of the year, and as more kids enroll, it creeps up. It's, and we have fewer, there are fewer places to go. Some people stopped operating because the regulations got a little harder, and some people stopped operating because maybe their site had an issue, so they had to close down their site for a while, and they lost some spaces there. They're trying to stay open, like Rutland County Parent Child Center, they had a flood issue, so they were able to get some help from Head Start and move some spaces to some empty Head Start spaces. But they'll run into a problem pretty soon because Head Start will need those spaces back. So, yeah, the capacity is a problem. The organizations that try to help with it are Building Bright Futures and a couple other places. I wish I could come up with the names of nonprofits that try to support people. If they want to open, want to open pre-K, they can.
My, can I go?
Sure.
I just don't want to lose my thought process. In terms of readiness, from the start of universal pre-K, have we seen more readiness or less readiness?
We've seen a decrease.
A decrease in readiness through the universal pre-K?
Yeah, I wouldn't think that's causal. I wouldn't say, as a result of universal pre-K, readiness has gone down.
No, right. But there's a correlation, which is not causation.
Across the state of Vermont, there's a positive correlation, two percent.
Right.
Right? In Rutland, there's a negative correlation, we're eight percent down. So, I would argue, like the slide on opiate-exposed births and some other things, including family resources, that we are, we are seeing the effects of those things more so than the impact of universal pre-K.
Last question?
You have three questions.
Last one.
No, no, I'm trying. I'm really interested in your questions. They're great.
Go ahead.
My, last question. How do we manage, the last part of your, the last slide, that is very interesting to me, but how do we manage the discrepancy in the readiness within a single classroom? You know, if you have a bunch of kids and one is, you know?
Right. So, that's what, that's what our teachers in kindergarten and our primary schools work with every day. They receive students who arrive with very few skills. They're wonderful, wonderful children. They haven't been exposed to a lot, or maybe they've been exposed to too much. Maybe their lives have been traumatized. And so, they arrive in kindergarten, and their biggest need is regulation, social, emotional skills, feeling consistent. And we do have also students that walk in, and they're reading. So, the teachers have to manage that, working as teams and with the supports we have in school, interventionists, therapeutic support, so on and so forth. And we'll tell you, especially early in the year, when the kindergartners walk in, it's all hands on deck. If you've never been to, you've never been to the cafeteria on the first lunch day for kindergarten, it's a ball. You got to show up, lend a hand.
Thank you.
If somebody from another town, does the Rutland City children have preference ahead of somebody else from a different town?
Great question. We don't, as a school district, people don't, only Rutland City residents can enroll with us. And then, if I am one of the universal pre-K providers like VAC, or Rutland County Parent Child Center, or Rutland County Head Start, or any of those, they're a business. They're trying to generate revenue. So, first people to register get the spot. And so, we always encourage folks, hey, get out early and find your spot if you want one. I think Head Start might have a few spots right now. Many years, Head Start gets filled up pretty quickly, and then people are off and running, trying to find another spot.
But now, Head Start is state-run, right?
It's, Head Start's a, Head Start's a federal program. I think Mr. Slanker's still on the board for Community Care Network, which kind of oversees Head Start as well. Maybe Ms. Engels also. So, it's a federally-supported program that goes through Community Care Network. Rutland Mental Health kind of supports that. But still, they can access universal pre-K dollars, and so, parents go and try to get in there, just like any place else.
But again, Rutland City children have preference.
For us, for us, we only register Rutland City kids. Head Start is Rutland County. Any student in Rutland County. The tough part is, you got to get to the site. So, the sites here in Rutland City, they might have one outlying site now.
Yep.
So, the slide with the numbers, you said there's sixty-three students?
In Triple E.
In Triple E.
There's sixty-three students with developmental disabilities.
Yes. And so, the total number would be two-hundred-and-thirty-five, right, of students that we would anticipate? So, that's about thirty-seven percent. What are the, what are we thinking about that for kindergarten in the future?
So...
In terms of how we're going to service, right, what are the numbers like?
Right.
Right? Because we're seeing more and more of this, right?
Current kindergarten class size, our current kindergarten cohort is Jess, hundred-and-thirty, hundred-and-twenty?
Roughly, yes.
So, and these, these numbers are for Ellie, students who turn three years old, up to age five, but aren't enrolled in kindergarten.
Correct.
So, there's, there's three years of students in that. And if there's sixty-three, you might take a third of that and say, okay, with the hundred-and-twenty coming in, you might see twenty-three kids.
Still about thirty-seven percent.
And you're still, you're still in a twenty, nineteen, twenty percent range. Our...
So, there's two, total of two-hundred-and-thirty-five kids.
Thirty kids coming in at ninety percent.
And there's sixty-five. It's just a bigger number. I just think, every year, that number seems to go up. I ask this question every year.
So, the, the two-hundred-and-thirty-five kids is an estimate of what a hundred percent would be. I understand what you're saying, and you're saying, like, I've got a concern. We have, and as Ellie said, we're seeing an increase in the number of kids, and an increase in severity. Combine that with the slide I showed you about opiate-exposed births.
Yeah.
And we're the fifth highest impoverished district. You see that when students enroll in kindergarten, we're working hard. And in Triple E, they're trying to do a lot of work to make sure the kids' needs are met. It is an ongoing consideration each year. As an example, I met with Ben Engels. She's been meeting with Jess and Lauren about how they're going to configure next year for kindergarten, how they're going to schedule. We work on transition with Sarah Crossman to try to make sure we know as many kids as we can before they enter, what are their needs, how do we support them. And then, just like we did last summer, if we need additional staff, like we added counseling and mental health support this past summer, we try to work on it within reason.
Just one quick, just a quick. If the children come into the school not ready, as, you know, as much as you'd think they should be, is there any kind of a fallback to the parents? Do we, as a school district or a whatever, fall back on the parent saying, your child is not ready for school, pre-K, whatever it might be?
The, there's two ways to answer that. One way is to say, we want to partner with every set of parents that walks into the school. We want a good relationship with every family. And for us to be successful in educating the students, we need a partnership with the whole family. So, as the kids, especially in the primary schools, we're working hard to engage the families in, here's what's going on in school, here's what you can do to help at home, so on and so forth. There's no, for a student to enroll in kindergarten, the competitive age of ed is, once you turn six, by August thirty-first, you've got to enroll. So, if I've got a five-year-old student, and some parents do this, they'll hold their child out. I would have kept my kids at home more. I love them. But, so, once they, once they get to school, it's a partnership and asking for support back and forth. Is there a fallback on the parents? If I'm a parent, we hope that, we hope that all of our parents look at their children as the most important job they're ever going to have. And we look at, we hope they look at school as to say, this partnership with school is the most important partnership I'm ever going to have. That's about as far as that can go.
Right.
Ellie, a quick question. At the end of the kindergarten year, what percentage would you say of our students are identified?
I wouldn't have that figure, but district-wide, we're, I think, about eighteen percent right now. So, give or take, it's probably about the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Allison? So, on the, going back to the slide, the kindergarten readiness and comparing Rutland City with the state. So, does the state own this data? Do you own this data, and you're able to pick it apart, like?
They don't have the data.
So, is there any way, especially like the last two there, where you're comparing attended public pre-K and did not attend, which some of that could be private, some of it could be not, do you have any access to extrapolate the data to dive deeper and to see if there's any commonality between what, what programs might be working better than others and, or identify, learn anything really from the data?
Yes. So, when, when parents register, or when there's a transition, and we're established that relationship, we always have a discussion with them about what the student's preschool experience was like. Did you go to preschool? What preschool did you go to, so on and so forth. Digging into that data is good internal use for us to say, we could give pre-K provider X, you know, professional development in this area, and we'll make a difference, like the early language acquisition stuff we're doing.
So, that's part of what the oversight is done. Okay.
Can I just ask? I just have some, a little, some concerns about the kindergarten readiness survey.
Yeah.
In that I don't know how reliable it is.
It's subjective.
Yeah. And I don't know how they could increase the reliability. And also, this is by total students and then our district. Be interesting to see it compared to some other districts that are the same, rather, by district rather than by the number of students, given we're a large, more impoverished district.
More, yeah. And I, I've had those looks before, and more importantly, kind of is, like, when you're looking at this, is what's the pre-K model in that area?
Mm-hmm.
When we were looking at what we were going to do around universal pre-K, we looked closely at Bennington, Burlington, Brattleboro, Berry, to see how well they were doing, what difference it was making, if any, what were the costs, so on and so forth. This was before Act 166. And that was a while ago. I can take that look again, just for my own edification. It comes down to, if you have high-quality, consistent instruction in a supportive and safe place, it works out.
Other questions?
One quick one. I'm sorry. I know it's a long meeting.
I'm glad you're so interested.
I read it ahead, and I put notes down. Your last slide, can you go back to your last slide?
The very last one.
The very last one.
Questions and answers?
The one that talks about actions, my favorite part. Can you speak to the last bullet saying, considering configuring a transition K class?
Yep. So, that was just a conversation we had about, so, let's say, just like you asked, let's say you have a wide diversity of students who enter in, and let's say you have students that are only ready for play-based learning and social dramatic play. Would it make sense to configure classes with different instructional models so that, you know, you're meeting the need of a group of students? The discussion I had today and in the past was, if you do that, and you say, like, okay, all of these guys together that need this, they have no other role models. And they'll develop, but they won't have any role models. So, that's, the positive is, you get what you need. The negative is, you get no role models, and maybe you move slower. Across kindergarten, a lot of our kids still need, when they walk in, they need... Across kindergarten, a lot of our kids still need, when they walk in, they need that first six weeks of school to develop routines, to learn to be safe, to figure out how it works, to figure out how you have a social, emotional, and emotional action. When, when Mr. Blow takes, takes the blocks from me, how am I going to react to that? You know? And those are the kind of things that kids, if their, if their lives have been in survival mode, their reaction to Mr. Blow taking the blocks is a lot different than somebody who's learned to say, when you take the blocks, it makes me feel sad, can you give me the blocks back? And, you know, let's problem solve this, can we share? It happens. But a lot of times we get kids that get upset and angry, yeah, you're laughing.
Doesn't happen in the Penn Tack house, does it?
No sharing.
Yeah, exactly.
So that, that's what that was. And it really is a discussion about how can we best configure and start the year, next year, across the board in kindergarten to try to meet the needs of all the kids.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm appreciating your interest.
Next on the agenda, superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So my report, we have a lot of upcoming events. I think that is one thing that I have not actually been providing you information, so I want to begin making sure you know what we have going on coming up in our schools. So in fine arts, we have one-act performances, March 14th and 15th, Thursday and Friday. Rutland High School Theater, they start at seven o'clock. Music in our school's orchestra will have a showing, March 20th, at RIS, an auditorium beginning at seven o'clock. And then the New England Music Festival is coming up, March 21st to 23rd in Woodstock, Connecticut. Those are all-day events and we have a variety of students participating in all of those. Athletics, the New England Cheerleading Championships are this Saturday at Worcester. I had to have somebody remind me how to pronounce that because I always want to say Workchester, right? State University. The time to be announced, we don't know yet. One of the beautiful student reps took away the boys' basketball championships, I'll leave that alone. The Vermont Winter Special Olympics are Monday and Tuesday of next week. We have, at PICO, we have about 40 to 50 students who will be volunteering there to help out the athletes and make sure it all runs smoothly. Parent-teacher conferences are Wednesday afternoon and all day Thursday. Friday is site-based professional learning, Wednesday through Friday. We are hitting everybody with the Peace and Justice Center, racism, bias, and diversity. Wednesday also, the Southwest Vermont Superintendent's Collaboration. We're also focused on racial bias and diversity and we are meeting in Mill River. Thursday, the Vermont First Year in Aspiring Superintendents Academy is held. It will be in Montpelier. I will be in attendance. Academics, I know it was in the paper, and I think the question was asked, what age can we get kids involved in debate? Well, we had Legislative Day and it was amazing just to see all of our kids engaged. I mean, even some of the kids who normally go in the room and they're just kind of like, oh yeah. They were thoroughly engaged. Debates were great. I mean, the one about the 72-hour waiting to be able to purchase guns, just to hear, you know, them talk about what if they have mental illness, what if they hit a crisis point, they have 72 hours, they can get the help they need. They had debates about abortion, you name it. And it was all current events that are either the Vermont State Legislature is looking at and some are in Congress. So, you know, we start that in eighth grade, getting our kids debating. And they do the research, they come together, they have a chair, they have, they have the whip, the minority whip. I mean, they do it and the state legislators come down and participate. And then in the afternoon, they do a big thing in the gym, in the auditorium, and then they're provided feedback from the legislators. So it's really a good way for our kids to get involved. And it's something we need to expand on. Student voice is critical. You hear a lot of it, you heard a lot of it that day, but you hear a lot of it in, in our high school. And we have to find ways to increase the amount of student voice. And finally, also in legislation, House Bill Three, which is an act relating to ethnic and social equity studies, standards for public schools passed. So the legislator has said, Agency of Education, you need to look into standards for public schools as they relate to ethnic and social equity. And that's all I have.
Questions?
I just have a quick question. I'm assuming we're following the federal legislation about the proposed funding cuts with after-school and summer programs.
Yes.
Do we have any more information or is that still just in process?
It's still in process. We won't have any, my guess is for at least six, eight weeks, even though those deadlines are coming up quickly, summer's coming up real quickly. You know, and AOE will start pushing that information out to us as well.
I actually have one more question.
Yes, go for it.
I'll be Dean on this time.
Record's three then.
Where's the wheel?
With Secretary French's proposal of looking at the state in four districts versus individual school districts, do we have any sense on where that's going? I'm hoping it's going to be dead in committee, but...
Well, there was an article today where Secretary French talked about Act 46 and how districts really need to finish their mergers and not just hold out, so to speak. You know, and that was in the Rutland Herald. So I think he's trying to move in that direction, but we haven't heard a whole lot about going to the fore and still in concept. You know, and I think there are ultimately challenges to it as relate to budgets, staffing, class sizes, and everything else.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Okay. So next on the agenda is the Personnel Memorandum, may have a motion for Personnel Memorandum 590 dated March 7, 2019.
Actually, shouldn't we do financing thing first? Aren't we on number seven?
You skipped for Peter.
Oh, Peter, I truly apologize.
All right, he'll keep you in line. He's just going to come for them anyway.
Sorry, Peter.
So the budget was voted affirmatively, 1,400 votes to 1,000, which is sort of the typical margins, no surprises.
Nice.
So we thank everyone who made phone calls to get out the vote and put out lawn signs. That was very helpful. Thank you. Since, since the ballot was printed, the state has issued new estimates for tax rates. And the current estimate would, would move our tax rate up half a penny, which is three tenths of 1 percent. So we don't forecast a drop anymore. We forecast up half a penny or, which is sort of basically flat, three tenths of 1 percent. That's it.
Questions?
Thank you.
Good news. All right. So let's try this again. My glass is here. Would anyone entertain a motion for memorandum, Personnel Memorandum 590, March 7, 2019?
Some of.
Second.
Second.
Superintendent Taylor?
So this will, for our non-licensed section, look to hire Stacy Eaton, Payroll Coordinator. We're going to have a transition. Kristi will, has already put in her retirement, so we're trying to have an overlap with learning, excuse me, as well as Noel Jepson, a para educator for Triple E. And then transferring Bonnie Woods from Payroll Coordinator to Financial Analyst, moving into what is currently Kristi's position to support that transition, as we will do when it comes time for Mr. Ammons.
Let's not talk about that.
Yes, we'll stop at that. And the second piece is our coaches' stipends, that I would recommend the following spring coaching nominations for the 2019 season are also passed.
Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Missed the hand.
Yes. I'm going to abstain, as I always do, and I have been pushing and not very strongly to get a better sense of how the equity of the coaching staff is going on. So I'm just working on it still, but I'm not going to stop it from going forward.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. So next on the agenda is Human Resource Manager Discussion, I believe, am I right?
That's, yeah, that's what I said.
Yes, okay.
No committee reports, yeah.
No committee reports.
You're good.
So I'm not going to drive this one because I, I know very little about this, this discussion. So is this something that you had brought up, Cam?
Yeah, I wrote a letter to the Rutland Herald and it got published. So one of the things that I agreed to do is not provide formal motions tonight. But what my interest is, is that we as a board don't have a very good ability to look behind the curtain because of this operation that goes on, that we either potentially get into conflict with what is actually going on by being a nuisance, which is kind of my specialty, or we are just out of touch and so don't know what's going on. So one of the things that I came up with, since I don't really like to spend money, instead of creating a BUDsman, which is probably what the appropriate thing would be, and to install them as the ability to sort of gain access to information and sanitize it as necessary so that information can come out. So my objective is that we have not really had a rapid response opportunity when things come up to actually address them and also be fully informed. So my idea, since the HR manager was a reasonably new institution that was just put in place, that we could take advantage of the skill set and have the opportunity for the first issue is to just have an employee that reports to us that sort of allows the chain of command to continue to function, but allows people to feel comfortable to come forward and say if we need to investigate something, instead of taking the CEO away, there needs to be a person that's sort of independent. And one of the ideas of coming to the board instead of having him still under the superintendent is that then there isn't, the, the person can focus on their job, not making their boss happy. And so that was my theory as to why I would co-op that one, because I don't want to create another position. And Allison's biting at the bit. And the second thing is that I think that we need investigative powers if issues come up. And I think the HR person would be the person that could go in and see if there's vaping on the third floor. I'm not saying they personally go there, but they could make some phone calls and report back. So if, it's the idea that we need the ability for the board to make informed decisions and that's why I would give the HR person investigative powers as well. So that's my theory.
Allison?
So my, the first concern that popped into my head is if we're having Human Resources report to us, how could we possibly ever act as a quasi-judiciary board and hear any complaints that escalate to the level of the board?
Well, that was another theory that I came up with, is actually have an investigative committee, so that it would only go to those three people instead of the full board. So I propose the full board at the moment to just start the process because the HR person is brand-new, so that in terms of the job duties could be shifted so that they were handled before through the superintendent for normal stuff, and the HR person would be for special investigative instead of personnel issues that would potentially be appealable to this board. I'm open to it.
So you're basically proposing that instead of the school board having one employee, our superintendent, that we have two employees?
Correct.
Questions? Joanne?
We have a chief executive officer and it is the superintendent of schools.
I feel a preach coming on here, go ahead.
I'm not, well, no, Cam.
Well, but I'm aware of that.
Well, I'll preach then, okay?
Okay.
That's what we have, all right?
Professorial, how's that?
And I do not want to undermine the authority of our chief officer. It also would not be, we did not hire the human resource person to be a co-chief executive officer. That wasn't the, the talent, skill set that we were looking for. I think that perhaps we should think about what objectives that you are trying to achieve and how the system and the organizational chart that we have now doesn't fill them because I, I don't see that at all.
Right.
I think, for me, I'll go back, I'm going to piggyback to Allison. One of the largest issues is going to be the REA because they are going to put up the fight saying that we as a judicial board, quasi-judicial board, when we have grievances come to our level, then that would literally knock out the human resource officer of dealing with anything that's happening in the buildings because he can't be aware of them, because we can't be aware of them until the time comes for grievance policy, or grievance issue. And I think that kind of undermines his authority and I don't think I want to do that.
Well, but it used to be handled by the superintendent, so that the issue about those types of issues, since the HR manager is brand-new, it's only been here six months, it's a little difficult to say that we have it steeped in tradition and it won't work when it never existed before. So job duties can be modified to make sure that that conflict doesn't happen. Because I actually didn't think the HR person should be involved in negotiations anyway because their HR function is to actually be the advocate for the employee, in my opinion, to make sure that our rules and regulations are being followed correctly. So that's what my concern is, is that we don't have a way of getting access to information that allows us to make informed decisions.
Mike? Yeah, just, since we've hired the superintendent here to do a job, a specific job, I would like to get his reflection on something, what you're talking about, of how he would feel about the HR guy moving into that type of position.
My opinion is I don't think it's appropriate. The HR person is responsible for all personnel. I think it puts the board in a conflicted spot where it really puts you at, at risk. It violate, it would also, at this point in time, potentially violate the grievance process, which is contractual. And I, it's really about how we're managing our people and our resources and how we're supporting our staff, our teachers, in the work they do and ensuring that we get the right people on the team.
Allison? Thank you.
So, you know, the other thing is that Superintendent Taylor is the one that proposed this position in the first place to aid in his responsibilities. So I think that we would be circumventing how he has decided to manage his resources and what he needs to get his, his job done. And frankly, if we're in a position, you know, where budget changes need to happen, then we're saying we have this other chunk of the budget that wouldn't be attributable to, you know, the first-line administration. It would, we would have to own that. And aside from that, it's, I believe it's a gross conflict, that's another thing to think about.
Any final thoughts? I mean, I, I think one thing we should, we should just do quickly is, is just talk to legal counsel briefly and just, because I have a feeling it's, it's very much, it would, it would put us at a disadvantage as a board, so.
Well, what about the alternative and actually go to an non-BUDsman?
Again...
Newspapers use them all the time. They maintain confidentiality without having...
I go back to, you know...
Right, we've hired, right, we've hired someone and we're, we're not taking action on this tonight, any...
No, that's why I was throwing it out, so that if alternative ideas come up...
I think you should think about what your goals and objectives are instead of the solution. People do this all the time. You're an operations guy, I can tell. You're moving right to the solution. Let's really think about what it is that you're trying to achieve and talk about it further. That's my suggestion.
Well, some of it has to do with...
We feel better than we, that we fix things, but we don't fix things by just jumping to fast conclusions. That's my, my shtick.
Anything else? Okay. So then I guess next would be, it's happening, response to public comments regarding the middle schools.
Hi.
Hey there.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank the school board for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I would also like to thank Mrs. Alexander for expressing her concerns to the school board about the middle school... Um, first, I would like to thank the school board for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I would also like to thank Mrs. Alexander for expressing her concerns to the school board about the middle school, um, and her concerns. I'd also like to thank Nancy Spalding-Nass, Doug Yarmachek, and Marissa Aston, and Mrs. Napolitano for being here tonight as well, as part of our, um, team from the middle school. I view this as an opportunity to share with you the direction Rutland Middle School is moving towards regarding supports in non-instructional areas. A bit of history for those of you who don't know, leadership over the last five years has included several situations that have led to inconsistency and confusion for staff, students, and the community. Upon taking the role of principal at Rutland Middle School eighteen months ago, I found that the teachers had worked hard at keeping the school in order. Initiatives such as the School Improvement Grant, where, excuse me, I have a cold. Initiatives such as the School Improvement Grant, um, were teacher-generated and have been an exciting part of the instructional improvements we have focused on. Despite this work and focus, behavioral data was incomplete and often not documented in a manner useful for analysis. Anyone that knows me knows I love data. I have researched many programs in Rutland City as part of the two decades of service I've had to help improve the outcomes for our children. I believe high-quality data is insightful. I have also witnessed how well our teachers use data to inform practice in the classroom. Mrs. Napolitano and I have requested that teachers carefully document behaviors to support students in our school. Teachers have been working on this documentation in a manner that provides evidence for needs of students as well as effectiveness of behavioral interventions. This means that Rutland Middle School is effectively in year one of behavioral data collection. Despite the data collection process, we have known that something needs to be done and have worked with staff and Mr. Taylor and Mr. Bliss on new ideas this year. Some have been immediately effective, and some have not been, as Mr. Taylor shared at opening day, "fail forward," so we have work to do. Here are some specific examples of supports that Rutland Middle School is currently providing. We regularly call parents on issues. We mail home behavioral referrals as a backup response to our phone calls. We have offered emotional intelligence mentoring for grade-seven students through a partnership that we have. We have done numerous mentoring referrals through other partner agencies for support outside of school. We have been able to offer more counseling support through our partnership with Rutland Mental Health this year. We are, um, we have distributed our counselors throughout the building and our administrators throughout the building, rather than having them all clustered in one area. Teachers have been working very hard on social, emotional learning to address trauma and learn how to de-escalate students in the classroom. We have increased coordinated services meetings, screenings, and Rutland Mental, uh, excuse me, Mental Health Services within and outside of the school. In the classrooms, we have used restorative practices that we have begun to explore as a team. We've used the See Something, Say Something curriculum this year, and teachers are working on engagement, some of which you heard this evening regarding the mock legislature. They're working on meaningful lessons to garner attention of students, despite the fact that there are societal pressures, which you heard about from Mr. Bliss this evening, starting in early education. Moving forward, the team of teachers, support, staff, and administrators are committed to supporting all of our students. We have been meeting to develop scheduling that supports a learning environment suitable for all of our children, an emphasis on trauma-informed practices in the classroom, and plans to provide more access to mental health and behavioral support systems. We are also working on the needs for library of, such as, uh, early release times for professional development and collaboration, responsive scheduling that is trauma-informed, a single point of entry for safety, an expansion of advisory time to support students regardless of their needs, whether it be academic, behavioral, or emotional. Finally, I would like to say that research-based practices and being informed by the data that we're currently collecting will help us make Rutland Middle School the best possible school. We deserve that for our children. I also would like to thank all of the staff every day that come into Rutland Middle School and serve our children, the parents that work hard to advocate for our children, even if they're parents of high school students that come back to advocate for us. Middle school is a trying age for everyone. Anyone that's had a middle school student knows that adolescence is tough, and we know that too. And we're working hard every day together at Rutland Middle School to help that. That doesn't mean we can't do, we, we can't do better, and we will do better, using best practice and research and data from our students. So, I would like to thank you all, and, um, I know it's been a long evening, but thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Joanne?
Thank you very much. Um, I'm concerned about the violence that I keep hearing about in the middle school, and, um, I am very sympathetic with kids who have it tough and who might see that sort of thing at home, but I, I am also very concerned about the vast majority of the students who, um, are subjected to violence in the classroom, and I'm wondering, you know, how we're going to address that specifically, uh, because that's really what the parents are upset about and the students are upset about. I think there's some lines that have been crossed, and I'm just wondering, um, I know, uh, we've had issues before you became the principal, I'm aware of that, and I know that last year we had a, an incident that was dealt with, with the, the, but I'm, what specifically are you going to do, Deb? I'm just, I'm worried about the violence.
Some of the things that we, we have done is the school resource officer has relocated to library of, so they're, if they're not at another school, as you know, we only have one school resource officer, um, and-
Only one.
Only one. So, um, we have worked extensively with, um, Officer LaGuardia to address violence and issues around violence. Also, uh, originally, at the start of the school year, suspensions, uh, were not used effectively. I, I think that last year I was able to do suspensions in an effective manner, and trying new things this year, it wasn't effective not to suspend kids without other resources available. So, as much as we want every child in our school, we do have to, uh, take a break at times to meet with the parents and to address, uh, violence. One of the things that we also do, we do, uh, crisis management for those students, um, behind the scenes, it takes up, uh, you know, a lot of time. The idea that, um, I think it's a misconception that nothing is done. We have, uh, the several classrooms that we can access to support students. We also, in, in a very limited way, right, um, not an alternative placement. We also are, um, working with coordinated services. We have meetings with parents and coordinated services to develop plans for students that are at risk of violent behavior. Unfortunately, there is a small population of students that, um, take up most of our time, and we put plans in place when that happens with support staff. I'm not sure if I answered all of your questions.
Um, what can we do to support you better?
I, I think there are several things that need to happen at the middle school. I need flexibility on staffing. Um, I realize that there is a budget that we all have to meet. Um, I don't think it's realistic to ask for more positions within our, you know, and add to our budget. However, um, you know, in the research that I've done, that the idea that having a social worker or a homeschool coordinator-type position would give our counselors the ability to, uh, meet with students on a more regular basis, because effectively two counselors right now are meeting with about a hundred and fifty students each. So, obviously, if they're in three-hour coordinated services plan meetings, that takes three hours away from counseling that can be done. Another area of concern, and this, I would say, goes into the stress factor for the students that you are, um, that are not violent, um, is the number of nurses' visits we see. So, we see a lot of nurses, nursing visits. We started logging that as well this year, um, and that's never been done before, so we're gonna, we have some good baseline data on that. And the idea that, um, again, having other services available within our budget and the flexibility to look at the data and to say if we, you know, if we lose a position through a retirement or through attrition, they go on to another job, is there a way that we can re-establish, uh, deeper social, emotional, um, learning environment that supports our students that have had traumatic experiences? The other piece of this that is telling is that when we listen to, um, Mr. Bliss speak this evening about triple E, um, that population of students that were, um, born with, into households with opioids and other addictions, um, is not a new population, right? So, what we are seeing now within our schools is a population or a demographic of students that are definitely, um, have been affected by the, the work that Project Vision's been doing for the last ten years, right? So, all of this work that the community's been doing, and we have been doing within our schools, the trauma that these students have faced has affected how they are dealing with adolescence.
Um, yeah, so, um, kind of as to what Joanne had, had first mentioned, so, students, um, that may not have the behavioral issues or the violent issues that are subject to seeing these behaviors in the classroom, what supports do we have in place for them? How do the students have their voice to, what are their options when they do not feel safe, and what are their choices and supports that we have for them?
So, supports, we do have opportunities, and this is new. Um, we had five staff members go to, um, the, uh, training over the summer on restorative practices, helping students within the circles systems. We're not there yet, okay, but we have started. Um, the five staff that went over the summer are able to help classrooms, so we've been doing that, where they go into classrooms, students are able to, um, use the restorative practices to express their feelings and, and why, you know, they didn't feel okay about whatever the situation was, um, or unsafe. We also, uh, use the See Something, Say Something curriculum, and we're continuing to use that language, because what we, we know is that there's different types of violent behavior, right? There's the, the hair trigger, I just got mad, you know, somebody said something to me, and I just have a quick temper, which isn't okay. There's that, but then there's like the, the, for lack of a better term, the premeditated sort of, I've been a whole week and I'm mad at this person, and I've put it on social media and everything else, right? So, the See Something, Say Something curriculum is going to help us with the students that are thinking about things in the wrong way, whether it's self-harm or whether it's acting out in another way. Did I answer it?
Yes, thank you.
Mike?
Uh, just a, a quick question here. The city budget, of course, we just voted on the city budget for the school and everything, and we as a board, uh, went with Mr. Ammons to go over the budget and stuff. So, you're, you were looking for additional staff. Now, was that brought up?
I-
When we were discussing budget, I don't remember seeing it, but-
I think she's looking for flexibility, flexibility and stuff.
Um, I approached-
Well, she's asking for more people, and I'm saying, I don't remember, I don't remember in the budget discussions, uh, maybe you can reflect on me, I don't know. I, I don't remember seeing any of this at all.
I-
For more staff for the middle school.
I think she said reallocation of staff.
Flexibility.
Flexibility in budget.
So, in other words, if I'm a teacher and I leave, she can hire somebody different?
Can she take, if she need, if she can do larger class-size averages, can then, you know, if someone retires, can she get, instead of replacing the teacher? She's not saying more staff.
Okay, okay, but was that brought up again, I guess, that's what I'm saying. When we were reviewing the budget then, was that brought up?
Um, I presented a option of changing a staff position, but not to the school board, because I would give that to, um, the superintendent. So, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was something that was discussed, but in, in big terms, like if, if I could change this, what would I change?
Yeah, well, that's, that's an important issue right now, so it should have been discussed, but in my, in my-
And that, that's not-
Um, but again, Mike, we don't do the allocation of staffing.
I understand that.
That is the building administrator, and that's the-
I understand that.
You know, so, as far as that goes, that's something for Ms. Hathaway to work out with Mr. Taylor, as far as if someone does retire, instead of replacing, can they hire somebody else?
I get it, I understand that, I understand that. I'm not stupid, I understand that.
I'm not saying that, Mike.
But I'm just, I guess, if we need more help over in the middle school and so on and so forth, be it additional, whatever it might meet, then why aren't we meeting that staffing?
That's right, and that's something-
Yeah, okay, that's all I'm saying. So, I'm bringing it up, we should be addressing it, uh, it should be a done deal as far as if we're having those issues in the middle school, and we should have more personnel there, if it takes another service officer, whatever it takes, we, we should have it. I mean, I don't, I don't know why we're, you know, even debating it, to tell you the truth.
Dina, your question?
Yes, um, first of all, I just want to start by saying that I'm, the, the caliber of your, of your teaching staff and your staff is amazing. It's really a unique experience thing through only an N of one, who, one student, but I, I feel like there's a lot of, a lot of great collaborative work and, and experiment, experiential work and project-based work that is happening in that building. Um, my question is, I think a lot of the parental concern, and I'm speaking, um, maybe, um, for other people that, as I shouldn't, is the management of the hallway, the non-classroom time, the transitions, when you have like a swarm of kids moving all together and they are, my son described it v, in a very excited way, it's like a ninja warrior, where you have to kind of manage the obstacles through, but it, I think that's where a lot of the friction, I may be wrong, but I think that that's where a lot of the friction may happen and a lot of the, those, uh, situations that are, uh, harder to manage. Is there any type of hallway management program?
We, so, the school expectation for faculty is that all faculty are in the hallway during all times when students are doing passing. Passing is an issue. Um, using the data that we have collected, uh, we'll be able to target easier when, like if it's after noon, we can make guesses at when it is based on our experience, but the data will tell us a lot more, you know, when, when those prob- data will tell us a lot more, you know, when, when those problems are happening. Um, a bell system would be incredible. Um, I know some people don't like, you know, just, there's a lot of different philosophies on bell systems. Um, the high school has a bell system and they, you know, it helps keep everybody going in the flow and the structure of what is the expectation is. Um, you know, some people will say, do we have a middle school model of that? Do we have a junior high model of that? I think we have to make the best model that we can for Rutland City students, you know? I think it's some kind of a hybrid. So, but the halls, I do agree. And we're working with staff to monitor them as much as possible.
Joanne?
Um, this, I don't know, do we need to have, uh, temporary or, uh, hall monitors for a little bit of a time to get the message across? Is that something, do we have?
Well, ironically, that was my idea.
That other budget thing?
Actually, that may have come from me first, but, well, 'cause we could spend contingency money and I'm-
Contingency money to-
So that, oh, sorry.
So that this, um, oh, go ahead, Cam. I, I'm agreeing with you, so I use my baby aspirin today.
Yeah, but anything I advocate usually loses, so. But, the idea was that, and I guess it's a bad analogy, but in the old days, there used to be the assumption that in the Soviet Union, they had a little old lady that sat on every corner, um, and so they could find out what was going on all the time. So, I'm not advocating, oh, did I get in trouble already?
Go ahead.
Um, so, the idea is for a six-week period or something, that would be just a quick thing that, to sort of establish order, because even when they're in class, and I'm open to ideas, I mean, I'm kind of micromanager city, anyway. Um, but, the idea is even when they're in class, if you had substitute teachers, I don't know how many we have on the roster that we don't use on a particular time, but they at least have some familiarity with the school. Um, and while I'm pushing that idea, I'm open to any other idea, it's just that, when the parent says that there's a problem, it's kind of finding a way to say, 'cause I have heard different things about whether it's classroom issues or hallway issues, you sort of have two different camps, and that's where I don't really know the particulars, um, to really advocate a particular position. But I do support the idea that we, because there's suggestions that sometimes there's, is there a method, this is off-topic, so you may shut me down, but, um-
Am I like the queen?
Well, you have power, you have power.
The tier of yours is a little tarnished, but we won't go there.
But, in terms of the, um, is there an anonymous tip line or something? Because, you know, I've heard, well, this is totally secondhand, but that there's a vaping problem in some bathroom. So, at the point that there is a pattern of behavior that is not acceptable, how does somebody get you that information without causing themselves to feel like they're snitching or something?
So, at different times, the middle school has had a, a safety box. It hasn't really been that successful for, for different reasons. Uh, we try to, we have one outside the, um, the planning room, or the quasi-planning room that we have, um, and it really hasn't been effective. Uh, students don't think to write in it or whatever. Um, the see something, say something curriculum really supports that telling an adult. And if you tell, um, a staff member, a, a parent or whatever, I mean, we have, we, we investigate every, um, claim that's made. So, I think a lot of the students have relationships with teachers that they will tell, they may not tell, like, in front of the whole class, but, um, we certainly have a number of students that are expressing their concerns about issues in the school.
So, what about the, the saturation suggestion that we put in an extra ten people for six weeks or something to monitor the hall?
That would be a superintendent issue.
That's, yes.
Well, if we're paying for it, if it comes out of the contingency fund.
Right, right. But they're the pros, so-
Then they would decide, but we could suggest it.
So, I think Charlene was first and then Allison and then we need to-
So, what is the, what is the protocol when, if a student is wandering the halls and is being belligerent to a teacher who tells him, what are you doing? And there's language and things that are happening there, what, what is the protocol for that process? Is it the teacher just takes, either deals with it or not deals with it? Or, um, is the student, if there's foul language involved, there's an, you know, an automatic, okay, this is what you're, you're going, I don't, I don't know if the students feel a repercussion of the language coming out of their mouth, possibly. I'm, I'm just making an example. I don't know if there's a, a clear, what's going to happen when I do that line?
So, we have, um, behavioral expectations that students are not going to do that, right? We are not going to, we're, we're going to speak appropriately, um, you're going to speak appropriately to a teacher especially and to your friends. So, there's all these processes around that depending on who, uh, the language is directed towards. Uh, one, you know, the first thing is that the parent, or, excuse me, the teacher and the student should conference about, you know, this is not okay, this is not how you should speak to a teacher. The next level of that is that, um, you know, they would call, depending on the reaction, they may give a, a detention or they may, obviously, they're going to call the parent if there's a detention involved. Um, one of the things that I think, um, is difficult is, uh, students that have not necessarily a disability, um, so they're not emo, they don't have an emotional disturbance or anything like that. What they do have is there's, you know, social maladjustment. So, we work with those students with behavioral plans that other people may never see, right? Just the student and the teachers that are involved and the parent. Um, Sharon, Mrs. Napolitano is an expert in behavior intervention plans and she is, we do functional behavior assessments on those students. Um, you know, the vast majority of our students are not doing those types of behavior. Unfortunately, it's very, um, the behavior can be very in-your-face, so it feels like more are doing it than I think really are. Again, the behavioral data that we collect is going to help us determine more of what's happening. But there are consequences.
Allison?
So, um, I, you know, I understand the thoughts of, of putting something in, we have a contingency fund, but my suggestion was going to be, if this is something that the board is saying they would like to allocate more resources, I think it would be prudent to have Ms. Hathaway and Mr. Taylor sit down and come up with a plan, because we could pay ten people to stand around for seven hours a day to work five minutes an hour, or we could hire one social worker that could have a much greater impact and be addressing more of the problems rather than just going with an intimidation other than, to the assumption that if more adults are in the hall, they'll behave. So, um, I think that that would be more of a route for the board to go, is to say, we are concerned, we might like to investigate allocating more resources to the middle school and let that conversation happen and they could come before the board and ask for use of contingencies, should that be needed.
That's a good idea.
Final?
Yeah, um, and actually, that was what I was going to ask. When you indicated there were two counselors, because I thought we budgeted for four behavioralists, are those different types of counselors or are the, the men, the Rutland Mental Health that we are spending forty dollars?
Those are clinicians. Um, so, Rutland Mental Health, uh, we have one clinician currently, we have a second clinician that is starting, and the, the, the piece with the clinicians that are, they're a huge benefit to our school. Uh, they only serve a very few students because it's a partnership, so, um, you know, there's only so many students a clinician will, will be able to serve effectively. Um, the other piece of that is there are students and families that choose, even though we see this great need for them, they choose not to, for whatever reason, not to participate in those services. Um, that, and then we have two counselors, two school counselors, so any student can go to them. So, that's, those are really the ones that are working with, um, all the students on a day-to-day basis.
Are they sort of like guidance counselors or?
They're, it's a hybrid, again, you know, they're, they're going to do work on social, emotional learning, they're going to work in groups with students, um, and they are going to, um, meet individually with students that are in crisis or any other situation.
We also have one of our counselors, um, who works specifically with our special education students who have counseling services on their IP. So, that has to be scheduled in as well, so that also-
And I do want to commend you. I'm not trying to attack and I'm not, and I don't have children, so that I'm not the typical, uh, but I do want to thank you for taking the time to talk to us and give us some understanding of the issues.
You do.
Just one last question, based on, um, data, it sounds like you started to do more collection. Do you have any, uh, numbers of behave, I, I don't know what the term is, but, but like behavioral write-ups for this year versus last year or some type of comparison?
That's a great question. Um, this is the baseline data, right? Because that last year, when Sharon and I came into the school, um, there was a lot of inconsistency, you know, you know, frankly, sometimes people are told, don't write referrals, sometimes people are told, write referrals. So, we've really been at this point where we're documenting different types of behaviors. We have to have that information to know what our student population is doing. So, we wouldn't be able to compare data from, uh, last year or even the last five years to this year because we've taken a whole different approach, because we need that information.
And I think part of what we look at is, one person might write a referral for a school code of conduct and another person might write the same behavior under another area. It could be, um, using profanity or disrespect in a classroom. And so, we're trying to refine that this year.
So, there's many categories for what those could fall under?
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Could I have a motion to move into executive section for contractual reasons that would put the board at a disadvantage in the opinion of the chair?
Could I amend that to include, Ann, the new person coming in?
Um, at, at this point, I would say no, not tonight.
Well, I know, but I, I think I can force a vote.
Okay, we can have a vote, sure.
Oh, somebody wants to speak.
Oh. Yes.
I just wanted to speak about Rutland Middle School for a moment.
Okay.
I just was watching this at home and I just wanted to say that, um, I'm a former teacher at Rutland Middle School and, um, I, I now work at Middlebury Middle School and I love middle school students. And I just wanted to say, I was listening to, um, the discussion of, you know, what the students need, and I just wanted to say, as a teacher that's worked there, that, um, the teachers at Rutland Middle School are extremely dedicated and they are highly skilled. And, um, you know, I care so much about the students in Rutland and it makes me sad to see that there's so many wonderful programs going on at the high school and I just feel that the middle school students need more. So, I just heard that, I like ran here, I kind of sound crazy, um, but, you know, there was this great commercial about crazy doesn't happen if you don't do crazy things. So, I do think that one of the things that would really benefit the students at the Rutland Middle School with behaviors is if they're, you know, if you notice that there's behaviors in the beginning of the year and they're brought up, that they are immediately addressed and not, you know, not waiting for them to become worse. Because at that age, students are so, um, influenced by their peers that it actually kind of takes over the school. And that's what I've seen in my past few years at that school, is that the negative behavior of a few, if it is not immediately addressed, continues on. And then no matter how much work your counselors are doing, your administration is doing, or your highly, highly dedicated teachers and support staff do, it's really hard, there's more of them than there are of the adults. So, I just, that was one thought I had, and again, I just couldn't say more great things about the teachers in that school and that I think we could be doing more for that part of our community.
Thank you.
Because they, they, we see them here talking about debate club and, um, those who are interested in Black Lives Matter and they're eloquent and they're supported, but there's a few students that we don't hear from at high school because we lose them in middle school. And it's just, it breaks my heart. Um, so, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Did you say your name?
You're coming, yes.
Oh, it's, um, Sandy Solero.
Thank you, Sandy.
So, um, back to you, Cam.
Yeah, I guess I'd ask for a roll call vote to allow the newest board member, even though she's not, well, maybe she's not even here, but, um, no, she is.
Okay.
And because I think that while she may not have the power to vote tonight, education is good, and so I don't see any harm to having her in that meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All right. You want a roll call?
Yes.
Start with Hurley?
Uh, no.
Mike?
Yes.
Dina?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes?
Yes.
What's the count? That didn't count.
Four yeses.
I think there were only three no's, me, Joanne and-
Me.
No's and how many yeses?
Can we legally have somebody in executive session?
Yes.
It is not under oath?
No.
No, she is, that's no oath.
That's why I don't think it's appropriate.
We can't just vote on this.
Yes, we can. We can invite any relevant person that we want to.
They're not relevant-
Not to executive session.
Not relevant to the matter.
Well, you lost the vote, though.
Okay.
No, I don't care. Then we can't have executive session.
I think I would, we'd have to call a point of order and-
And call the attorney.
Okay, so, do we, do we really want to bring an attorney involved?
Yes.
You do, okay.
Okay.
We can cancel the executive session if we have to.
Can we re-vote?
The member asked not to, the newest, the newly voted-in member, so.
Oh, since when?
Since now.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So, we're going to move on. So, um, may I have a motion for executive session, uh, for contractual reasons that would put the board in a disadvantage in the opinion of the chair?
So, move.
Second?
Well, I vote no. We didn't take a vote.
Okay.